The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for this special board meeting. I'd like to call the board meeting to order by beginning with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Good evening, Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Sitnikoff.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Dan Hoobel.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
All six board members are present. Before we get started into our discussion around reconsideration of gating criteria, I just want to provide some some background into how this meeting came to be and why we're meeting here tonight. So those of you who watched the January 11th board meeting know that we had, excuse me, the work session know that, oh, there was a board meeting, excuse me, that we had discussion around gating criteria. A motion was made and ultimately tabled. For a couple of different reasons, we felt like it was important to have timely discussion around that topic. And so the decision was made to move a special board meeting instead of hosting it on January 25th, moving it up to today, January 19th. Those of you who watched that meeting on the 11th know that the board passed a motion that directed Superintendent Merly and the administration to take another look at the K-12 gating criteria and specifically the model in which we were going to bring those students back. That was really a driver for a few different things along with current events in our community. And some of those will come out tonight around safe ways that we can follow mitigation strategies, that we may have access to vaccines. And this information then led us to creating another proposal that the board will discuss tonight. Obviously, we've gotten hundreds and hundreds of pieces of feedback from people in the community and strong opinions on all sides of this issue. And I think it's our role and responsibility to have discussions and consider facts as they change. Couple of things that I want to clarify tonight. First of all, it's clear now that President Shelton, sorry, excuse me, Vice President Shelton has resigned her position on the board, leaving us with six members. At our meeting next week, we will discuss the replacement process. But until that spot is appointed, we will operate with six members. And what that means is that any time a motion is made, it still needs four board members to support it, a majority. If a motion is made and it results in a 3-3 tie, it's essentially a failed motion. So any new motions that come until we replace that empty seat will require a for to vote in order to pass. Yeah, so I think that's really all I have right now. We will have discussion here tonight and
Eric, can I just ask you to clarify one more thing?
Yep.
You did mention that the the motion to have a district look at another by gating criteria and to look further into this at our January 11th meeting led to another proposal. Can you be as clear as possible about where that proposal was created and who was involved?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think that as a result of a few pieces of information that had changed, some as a result of Monday's meeting, I had a conversation with Superintendent Merly and asked him and said, if we were to look at another proposal that didn't take gating criteria into consideration, but looked something else, what would that look like? So I was the one who asked for that information and then ultimately, you know, put the the motion together at the advice or under the advisory of Superintendent Merly and his team. So. Brenda.
Um, I'd like to make a motion if I can, Eric.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you ready for that? Okay.
Yeah, you can start there.
Okay. I move that the Green Bay area public school district shall commence in-person instruction for 3K through first grade on February 15th, second through fifth grades on March 1st, and a blended instructional model with AB cohorts in grades 6 through 12 on March 1st. With the week of March 22nd, all students attending virtual and the same models of instruction resuming March 29th and 2021, and that the administration shall develop criteria for transition to virtual learning due to transmission of COVID within the district schools.
A second.
And then if I can comment, Eric?
Yeah, could, I just want to write down the bullet points of the motion you just made. So you said 3K through two?
3K through one, first grade on February 15th.
February 15th.
Second through fifth grades on March 1st. And then March 1st also for 6 through 12, but with the AB cohort model. And then the rest of the motion is pretty much the same
Okay.
prior one.
So. Okay, so the, I just want to make sure I have this right. So 3K through one, February 15th with a blended model. So that would be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Right, yeah. I just said in-person instruction. Do you want, I can change it to blended instruction because that's what we're calling that four days a week model, right?
So you're taking out, you're intentionally not having the AB cohorts for your 3K1 and your 25 portions?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I just want, I'm sure everybody, as you read that, was listening to it. I know that I was. So just to clarify, 3K through one would start February 15th in your motion. And in a blended model, which means Monday, Tuesday in person, Wednesday's virtual, Thursday, Friday in person.
Yeah.
And then second through fifth grade would start March 1st in that same model. And sixth through 12th grade would start March 1st, that same date, in a cohort model, AB cohort model.
Yes. And then they'd be all virtual, like the previous motion, all virtual the week after spring break, and then resuming those same models of instruction on March 29th.
And in the original motion, it also talked about administration developing criteria for transition to virtual. So all that stays the same.
All that stays the same, right?
Okay, so we have a motion that was made and was seconded by Dawn. I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions, but Brenda, I'll start with you. Any comments and thoughts that went into that motion? And then I'll go to Dawn, who seconded it, and then we'll
Okay.
So, go ahead, Brenda.
So the, the changes I made, I guess I, the more I thought about it, the more concerned I was with the AB cohort model for elementary kids. And I'm, I put this out there as a motion. You know, I'm certainly willing to consider tweaking it and things like that, but that's the reason why I put the, I eliminated AB cohorts for the elementary schools. I've, as you know, I've talked about a lot of, about our youngest kids, and I don't think they spread COVID as like the older kids do. I chose February 15th. And, and because, basically, I chose February 15th because I'm hopeful that that would potentially be the time when our teachers would be offered the second vaccine. And so if, if we talk about it and once we have Steve talk about vaccine, if that date's going to be different, then I would recommend changing that date. The reason, I know people are, are thinking there needs to be two weeks after the vaccine. But in looking at a study out of the UK, where they were, they were looking at their vaccine proposals and looking at the data, it seems as if the, after the, so two weeks after your first vaccine, you actually get a very large bump in protection. So it depends on the vaccine, but anywhere from 85 to 90% effective after the first dose. And then your second dose gives you that extra bump into the 95%. So based on the fact that we would have teachers vaccinated one with, with pretty high levels of protection in a group that is our very low spreaders, that's why I put that date out there. This, and then the March 1st date is, I think, based upon, again, it's based upon vaccination and whether we're able to do that. But that would be a couple of weeks after teachers get their second dose. And so then they would have very good protection going into classrooms with kids that are a little bit older. That, the other, the other thing I'd like to, well, and in the future, and I don't think this has to be part of the motion, which is why it's not in there, in the future, I think it would be nice to give consideration to, you know, do we need to continue the AB cohort model until the end of the school year, or if things start going well with, with the opening of our schools and we're not having a lot of problems and our teachers have been well vaccinated at that point, I don't know if others will have been vaccinated either, but I, I would hope that this is, to me, a starting place as opposed to something that we're putting in place for the rest of the school year, especially for the secondary kids. And I think that, I mean, for me, the struggle really has been balancing the, the safety and protecting our staff and our students and our families from COVID, which, you know, has been a virus that still, we're still learning about because it hasn't been around for that long. With my need to feeling that we, we really need to get our kids in school, I think the the tipping point for me, and I know I've felt pretty good about our, well, I felt good about our virtual instruction in general. Obviously, we all would rather have our kids back in school, but I think our teachers, our staff had just have made Herculean efforts to do everything they can to provide the best virtual instruction they could. I know it's not been easy, and I know they're working harder and more hours than they've ever worked before. I've been in many virtual classrooms and seen firsthand the good work that they're doing, the family engagement that they have, the projects and, and work that their students are doing. And I just hope, I put a wish out there for our community that we could at least acknowledge the work that our teachers and staff have done, even if you haven't agreed with our board decisions. Because I think, to me, there's no question that they've, that they've risen to the occasion and they've done the very best they can. But what's been the tipping point for me and why I started to think about the gating criteria versus just figuring a way to get kids in safely is that I'm just hearing from more and more very quiet voices, people that are emailing or calling us and just sharing their stories of how their once engaged and enthusiastic children are really sinking into despair and, and disconnecting from their school. So, and I, so I just, I've always had concerns about our, about our kids. And I've always been trying to balance that, but I feel like the, the tipping point has been there's just more and more and more kids that have kind of reached the limits of, of the effort that they've put in and the effort that their families have put in to make virtual instruction work. So that's why, you know, how I've come to this. I've always been a supporter of the science, but I feel like the science is tipping more toward that, that it's not, it's not an exact science in terms of what should the gating criteria be. It's more about about putting in the mitigation strategies. And so by having the six feet, the ability for six foot distancing, that was kind of that last, that last mitigation strategy that prior blended didn't, didn't provide. But I feel like if our elementary teachers are vaccinated and we bring our kids in, that that's, I feel like that that's a pretty, a pretty safe environment. So anyway, I think that's all I'd like to say at this point, and I'd be interested in just hearing. I know there's been a lot of conversations about the vaccination schedule and the potential for that. I'd be interested in hearing about that. And maybe after that, we would look at, at tweaking some of these dates.
I think what I'll do is I'll go to Dawn next, and then Steve, I may ask you to just speak a little bit to Brenda's question.
Well, and my, my question is related to Brenda's. Steve, how much confidence do you have in that February 15th date from a vaccination standpoint for our teachers? If we get, I'm just thinking if we, I like the idea of getting rid of the cohort. I haven't heard for K-5, I haven't heard anything positive from anybody about the cohort. So I like the idea of that, but the whole point of the cohort was to limit density prior to vaccination. So I guess what I'm really interested in is your level of confidence, given, I think vaccine distribution has been a bit of a snafu throughout the whole country. Your confidence that we could have, you know, our, our K-1 teachers vaccinated by two doses by February 15th.
So I'll, I'll offer what I know. Kristin Johnson's with us today, and she may have some additional information to share with us. So what we've been told at this point in time is that the first available date for those in the 1B category is January 25th. And then the first available date for second dose would be three weeks later, and that would be February 15th. So those, those dates of the 25th and the 15th are first available dates for 1B. We understand that we're working very closely with Pervaya right now. And they have a large capacity site. Many of you may have seen it on the news yesterday at UWGB. Obviously, we're not the only crew that'll be in that 1B. It'll be all other educators. K-12 and higher ed here in Brown County. And, and so from that standpoint, from a date range, just anticipate those are first available dates. It's likely that we will not be able to get everybody in on the 25th, and so they'll be scattered throughout that week. So probably more appropriate to think of the weeks of February 25th and the weeks of, the week of February 15th for first and second doses. For our staff, of course, that is Dawn, as you mentioned, if everything goes according to plan. Kristin's already worked really closely with the Pervaya team to get our 1A folks vaccinated. Kristin, I don't know if you've got additional information that you could add that would help the board with this.
I think the hard thing of picking January 25th is, so they've released the January 25th for 1B for the police officers and first responders, but they have not named educators yet, which is what brings me a little bit of fear for using that date. I know they're supposed to meet again later this week, but I feel like that's kind of been a common theme also. The Dr. Rai did assure us that when that date is released, that on that date, we can release email or notification to our staff, and then they can start signing up. So it'll go quick when that date is finally chosen. Between last week Friday and then the early part of next week, we are going to be offering about 751A staff members to be vaccinated, and we've heard that many of them are signing up already, which is great news.
What makes those staff?
That'd be my only.
1A staff member? Like, so what makes you 1A? Is that the extreme medical risk? It's part of 1A?
Nope, it would be teachers taking care of students that are not going to be able to maintain that social distancing and the period. So think about our ID kids that are back, our DHH kids, our students with, that have autism. So the ones that are working in very close proximity with those students, trying to keep the
They have been defined into the 1A group by the state of Wisconsin.
They are because they are caregivers of those students. They are acting as caregivers when those students are on site, and they're starting on site today.
Okay.
Hey, Kristin, just for the audience, can you tell them what ID and DHH mean?
I apologize. So the intellectually disabled and then DHH would be our deaf and hard of hearing students.
Dawn, did you have?
Other questions on the vaccine that we can answer for you? Sorry, Eric.
No.
So if we're, we're talking the week of February 15th, you think, so the end of that week, the start of the trimester for our K-5 is March 1st, correct?
Oops, sorry, I'm on mute. Yes, it is.
So from a confidence standpoint in getting everybody vaccinated, if we were looking at that date of March 1st for everyone, would you be more comfortable? Would you feel more
That, that would give us a much bigger window. Again, Kristin may have something to offer here, but as I shared earlier, you know, when you think about 1B, I know that there was a big push in Milwaukee to add employees of grocery stores yesterday. I don't know whether or not that'll be successful. Obviously, the more people that are put into 1B, the longer the line grows for our staff. And so the greater the likelihood that they are getting the vaccine either later in that week of the 25th, or perhaps even into that next week. And then, then you've got to roll forward three weeks. So I guess the question you asked was, do I have a higher level of confidence that we'll have a greater percentage of staff vaccinated by March 1st? I would say, yes, I've got a higher confidence level that the further we go into the process, the greater the likelihood we're going to have a larger number of staff vaccinated.
So if we pushed out, if we pushed out K-1 to March 1st, we'd be pushing them back two weeks. But Brenda's proposal also brings our high school kids back a week earlier than what their original proposal was, correct?
Yeah.
And, and our, and our K-5 would be, we'd be eliminating the cohort, so those students would be going to school four days a week versus the in-person two days a week and then virtual. Okay, thank you.
Steve, just, oh, sorry, before I go to Brenda, it looks like grocery store workers will not be in 1B. I think that just
Okay, thanks.
Are there like, but the prioritization within 1B is, is awaiting a decision later this week? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so have you heard anything about where in 1B they would be? I mean, it sounds like some of 1B is going already, right?
1A is going already. They've talked about 1B, which would be Protective Services, which are police and fire, that they would start earlier in the 1B group, and that would be the week of the 25th.
Okay, wasn't there, wasn't there some news reporting that, I thought there was some news reporting, although I could be wrong, that there was some, there was some 1B today?
I'm not aware of that, Kristin. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. At this point in time, the only ones I'm aware of are 1A.
I did see this morning on the news, they had some of the police officers out at the new Pervaya site at UWGB getting their vaccines. And I believe that started yesterday. It was a prior film.
Brenda, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, I hate to miss a window of being able to open. And so, but I understand that, I mean, right now, we have no idea for sure. We can't, we can't count on these, the vaccination dates for sure. But how? I guess, I mean, there's, to me, there's a question of the dates that our teachers and staff will be able to get the first vaccination. And then, then there's a big question about second doses. There's a question about supply out there and, and things like that. I I, I don't know how, how will we be, how certain can we be once our teachers have had, or staff, I should say, the staff have had their first dose, when they would be eligible and be able to get their second dose? I mean, is that going to also be up in the air based on supply, or do you feel like that's, those doses will be there? From what
I'll let Kristin jump and go ahead.
Worried about that. So from what I've understood is they are very confident that that second dose of vaccine will be available. So they're, you know, they were kind of holding things. Now they're moving things forward a little bit faster so we can get more and more people in. But when I got mine, so I had mine two weeks ago, immediately they scheduled for your second one. So they're holding that vaccine then for when you need your second dose. And that's what I'm hearing from all healthcare workers also.
Okay, because I thought I heard
That's what I heard. That's what I heard from the Pervaya leadership team too, and, and I understand where you're coming from, Brenda, because when I, when the news started carrying the storyline that they were releasing what were to be held as second doses so that we could get first doses out sooner rather than later, I immediately contacted the Pervaya leadership team and, and as Kristin said, they indicated a high level of confidence that those who are vaccinated with dose one would have access to dose two.
Okay, so I'm, I'm wondering how difficult would it be for us to set a date of opening, once we know when the first date is? Is that, you know, can we, can we set the opening date more, you know, more confidently? Once we have that first date known, and then we'd have three weeks to prepare schools for, and it would just be initially, it would just be, if we follow the dates, the date progression that I have initially, would just be our youngest learners anyway.
So I think we would have, once the healthcare professionals in the state of Wisconsin have, and our providers have given us that first date, and I think we'll have a high level of confidence about the completion for that second date. So I, you know, especially if we're looking at a period of like a week, so if we're thinking of the week of the 25th, if it turns out to be that week, great. If not, and it's, it's the week of the first, well, then, or I'm sorry, yeah, the first, then we'll have a, a high level of confidence about when that first dose will be completed. We know when the second dose will start and when that, that third weekend. So once, once we have more information from DHS and from our providers, we'd certainly be able to give you a more accurate idea about when our, our staff would be vaccinated.
Okay, and then, and then be able to potentially, I mean, we could, I'm thinking, I made this motion so it wouldn't be so long to begin with, but I was thinking of, you know, making a statement of the date being, you know, parentheses that, based on a vaccination date, based on second dose, based on, you know, all the different kinds of things. So that, you know, I'd be willing to make that friendly amendment if, if board members want to.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Thanks. So is there any possibility then if this, if this vaccination becomes available sooner than later, that we could actually bring our high schoolers in the week of the 25th? Is it, is it possible at all to have them come in earlier? Or is there any possibility of even the sixth, sixth and ninth graders coming in to the buildings to acclimate before other grades come in? Is it, you know, is that possible? And does that hang on the vaccination itself as well?
Sure. So that's exactly where I was going to go. There's a couple of them questions there. So the first question was, can you bring the sixth through ninth graders in earlier? And as a board, you can bring anyone in anytime you want to. If you make a conditional on receiving the vaccine, it's likely based on the current timeline and what we know that, that week of the first, I'm sorry, the week of the, by the end of the week of the 25th, that we would have people with their first vaccines is our best case scenario right now. So the end of the week of the 15th would be when second dose was given. So if you wanted to make a contingent on, on second dose, then probably the earliest then probably the earliest, uh, safe date is is that week afterwards, which is the twenty second of February. So that would be your earliest date if it was conditional on on dosage and second vaccine. And then your other question about bringing sixth and ninth graders in earlier, we actually had a really robust conversation about that today. That was obviously part of that, the first plan that we brought forward where we suggested bringing them early. And I know that the building administrators at the secondary level would like to have their sixth and ninth graders in at least for the type of orientation that we do normally prior to school starting in August.
Um, okay, thank you. Also, a question about other school districts. Is anyone familiar or I'm hearing that there are other districts that are getting their vaccinations this coming week? Is that specific staff members that may be doing that? Is there, is it a health healthcare provider? I guess issue of of what's distributed and when?
Sure, side off or a couple, couple things on that, and then Kristen jump in. So one is that other one A educators in other districts are certainly getting their vaccinations, just like our staff is. And then the other thing I would offer, I know there was a big news story about Jamesville getting all of their staff members vaccinated on the twenty second, and I can share with you that in a call with DPI last week, apparently they jumped the queue. And and when that story went public, DHS immediately contacted the district and and let them know that while they certainly understood the good intentions behind that and and the work that they were doing with their local healthcare provider. Even if the the vaccines are available at the healthcare provider, they haven't authorized one B to get in line yet. And so they had them stand down.
Okay. And is there any reason why once staff has availability to have both vaccinations that there, we wouldn't be back full time? And if not, what do you see the barriers for that? Like, what would be the reason and and how would we work through that?
So I think the, one of the things that that we're working on as we prepare to have students back in is our ability as a district to meet those mitigation factors. And to make sure that that we are able to provide with a high level of confidence. I, I, a plan to you that allows us to meet each of those five mitigation factors. So Eric, if it's appropriate, can I just walk through those real quickly?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so I remember the first one's hand hygiene. We have a high level of confidence that that we can get our students to the restrooms and we can also provide hand sanitizer stations in classrooms and communal spaces so they have the opportunity to practice good hand hygiene. Facial coverings is the second one. And again, this is something that will require for all staff, all students. We do have some exceptions for some of our special education students. But again, this is something that as a district, we have significant control over facial coverings. The third one, and this goes right to to your conversation, Rhonda, is physical distancing. And you'll recall that that one of the challenges in the first model that we discussed was that if we brought everyone back, that we we would not be able to do physical distancing. There just simply isn't enough space. And certainly it's more of a challenge for us at the secondary level where children rotate from classroom to classroom as they work through the day. So they're in the hallways and they're they're with different students in different classrooms at different times. And so the only way at the secondary level in particular that we could provide that assurance that we were physically distancing would be to use a cohort model. We've had multiple conversations with both districts in the area across the state, across the country that that have used this model as a way to ensure a higher level of physical distancing in the school. And so when we look at, you know, the other thing that people have talked about is podding or trying to keep your your kids, in a sense, in one classroom socially isolated and physically distanced from another classroom. We can do that at the elementary level more effectively. Obviously, with our schedule of rotational classes, we can't do it six twelve. And so I, for us to assure parents that we can do physical distancing, really the only way to do that is cohorting. Building sanitation is the third one. And again, I, we had originally looked at a scaled up process with grade levels coming back on a stepped in process because that would give our custodial staff the opportunity to scale up and ensure that they could maintain the sanitation and cleanliness in those schools. And then the last one, and and we haven't had a chance to talk about this yet. But we can certainly go into more detail with this later if you have follow up questions. But contact tracing has always been a challenge for us. We understand that the county is is overwhelmed and they simply don't have enough staff to do this work. And so the team has gotten really creative and figured out a solution that will allow us through hiring some temporary part time employees to provide relief for other employees within our permanent year on staff so that we can do contact tracing inside the district. So this is the first time that we've actually come to you and said that we think with with some level of confidence that in particular, using a cohort model with our secondary students that that we can guarantee I that with some level of confidence that we can meet those five mitigation strategies. So long answer, Rhonda, but I just wanted to touch on all five of those.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Can you actually also speak to what if there aren't enough staff members? Because it sounds like we're, this is contingent on vaccinations and vaccinating staff. So what happens and do you have any sort of a? Is there any plan if you don't have enough staff come forward to want to be vaccinated? Like, what is, what does that look like? Can you touch on that at all?
So I think there's, there's a nuance in there that's important to understand, right? So when the vaccine is available, we will offer it to all staff. It's not mandatory. Staff do not have to choose to be vaccinated. But once vaccinated, then if if, for instance, under the motion that's on the table, if we are going to return to school upon the availability of vaccination for all of our staff. It's not that it is, it's not that we're returning to class based on staff being vaccinated. It's that we're returning to school based on the vaccination being available to staff. And I think it's important to recognize that that we will have staff that will choose not to be vaccinated but may wind up being onsite. I know from the Brown County Superintendent's meeting today, it sounds like so far across CSU seven in Brown County, that about seventy five percent of the staff who are offered the vaccine are taking the vaccine. So if it holds true here, we'll have about seventy five percent of our eligible staff will wind up being vaccinated.
Okay, so just to be clear, then none of this is contingent on the amount of staff you're saying that actually become vaccinated. The fact that it's offered is that's that's basically what you're saying. It is nothing to do with the amount of staff that are vaccinated.
Correctly, because we can't require that.
Okay. All right, I'm being asked. I just want to make sure. This was a question I had several. Several people had asked me to reach out and ask about this in the last couple of days. So thank you.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Yeah, in my mind, with the staff vaccination, it's it's mostly about protecting the staff who feel that that's going to give them that layer of of safety that they're looking for. We we know we probably will not have students that are vaccinated, I would I guess, you know, even even by the end of the year. I don't know when kids are going to start getting vaccinated. But and so I I would think that if we have teachers vaccinated and they're, you know, able to protect themselves, but we're still going to have to follow these mitigation strategies as much as we can for the safety of our students, because if they're not vaccinated, you know, they they need to have the the mitigation strategies in in place to be able to 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 decrease the, you know, the risk of of COVID spreading in our schools. But I think that it's, I mean, ideally, you'd have everybody vaccinated, but I realize that that's not going to be the case. And and at least then, because the spread in schools, from what I understand, is more more likely to happen adult to adult. And so we, so if we have our adults vaccinated, then then, you know, we have to maybe have don't have to socially isolate them. They can have meetings in person with six feet of distance instead of being on Zoom or something like that. But so I I think that that, just to make it clear to people, I think the mitigation strategies as many as we can do will have to be in place. Obviously, I think social distancing, if we bring our elementary kids back, we won't be able to do six feet, but I think with the other mitigation strategies in place, that 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 won't be as important, especially if the teacher is has been vaccinated and then there's less risk that that teacher will get COVID and then we will have fewer problems with absence absences with quarantining and things like that during the during the year.
And I'd invite Kristen to to jump in here if she's got additional follow up information, but I know that everything we've heard from DHS has been pretty adamant that regardless of where you're at in the vaccine process and even after students have been vaccinated, that they are asking us to consider maintaining all five of the mitigation strategies. So Kristen, I don't know if you've got additional information to add to that.
Totally agree. So we need to maintain masking and the distancing in order to help protect because they really don't know how much protection you have of not spreading the virus even once you get the vaccine. So what the vaccine is protecting you against is from illness.
So then, sorry, can I?
Yeah, you're good.
So then if we if we bring our elementary kids in, the six foot distancing is not going to be possible in our classrooms. Is that allowable, Kristen, if it, based on what you just said?
With DHS guidelines, it's really the six foot is more of a recommendation and a guideline. So that is one thing to keep in mind. And we do know that we're going to have concerns when it comes to contact tracing in the elementary school, especially when you're looking at those real little ones, because they're not going to stay six feet away. So those are things that we do need to think about, but certainly it adds a layer of protection for that teacher and probably helps put their mind at ease also.
Steve, I'm going to ask a quick question, Dawn, and then I'm going to go to Laura, then I'll come back to you. Steve, could you speak to two things? One, you know, we asked parents to declare a few weeks ago based upon a different criteria. So just confirm that we will allow parents to re-declare if this plan were to pass. And then can you also speak to what this means if if this plan were to take place for students and the possibility of staying with or changing teachers midway through the year? Because I know none of the plans that we propose are foolproof. So I want to just, if you could speak to what that could potentially look like at different grade levels?
Sure, Josh is on with us and he may have have some information to share, but I I can tell you that I that the, across the board, through all our buildings, the administrative team and their support staff at each building have done a tremendous job. We've got approximately ninety percent, might be a little north of that right now in terms of returns. Approximately sixty percent of our responses have said they would come onsite. Approximately thirty percent have said that they would stay virtual. Ten percent, we're still working on getting feedback from. And the next step in the process, because of the way that Josh has set it up, if parents decide regardless of the model that the board selects, that they would prefer to go in the other direction. They've selected virtual, they'd prefer to come onsite, or they've selected onsite, they prefer to go to virtual. We'll manage that transition at the building level. And so that will afford the parents the opportunity to reach out to hopefully a building staff that they've got some familiarity with and not take that election change right there at the building level. So Josh, I don't know if you've got more to add to that.
I do. I, we are up to ninety one percent response rate, which is fantastic. So we're down to just nine percent, no response. The current virtual district wide is twenty seven point six percent, hybrid sixty three point three percent. I would expect it to get to that seventy thirty split based on the rate at which the remainders are choosing virtual and probably depending on what happens here tonight. I will also say too, it's pretty well distributed among the grade levels. Every grade level is at twenty five percent or greater. We have one grade level that is over thirty five percent electing virtual. So particularly at the elementary grades where our classroom sizes are are smaller. I mean, the average class is going to have about twenty five percent of those kids staying home.
Josh, is that, I'm sorry, when we look at the high schools, is that distribution pretty equal across all the high schools? Or do we see any fluctuation between our high schools?
There's fluctuation between the high schools.
Okay.
And then the second half of that question that you had asked, Eric, was the likelihood that we can assure parents that their children have the same teachers. The difficulty with that is regardless of the mode that you select, we have teachers who have approved Americans with Disability Act or Family Medical Leave Act exceptions that will require us to place them in an offsite virtual instructional slot. Depending on what they're doing right now, I would presume that there's a high likelihood that if you are in an offsite virtual instructional slot after a return onsite, that you will not have the same students that you had when you were that that classroom teacher. Because you'll likely be working with an aggregate number of students that may in fact come from multiple schools across the district. So then by default, if you are coming onsite, there will be classrooms that their teacher is now offsite, virtual, and so they will then need to be moved to a different teacher. So I I can't tell you with a high level of accuracy at this point who will and who won't have the same teacher that they have right now. But in the the current model with the assumptions that we have, there will be students in both modalities that will have new instructors when the transition is made.
I saw Laura first and then Dawn and then Andrew.
Um, I wanted to ask about mask wearing. I know I've talked to Melissa about this. But I think we can anticipate that there'll be a certain, there will be some cases where people refuse to mask. I would like to know what our plan is to enforce that. Because I just, everything I've heard from our staff is that that has to be just non-negotiable the whole time that they're in school unless they're eating. So and it has to be consistent throughout the district and in every single school. So everybody has to be on board and it has to be enforced evenly and consistently. How do we do that?
So Melissa and her team have been hard at work on a policy process that would address that. So in advance of our meeting next week, maybe as a preview for it, Melissa, if you could bring them up to speed on the work your team's doing.
Laura, after we talked, I did some research and WASB has come out with a model policy for mask wearing in public schools. We're working as fast as we can. We did receive about thirteen public records requests from Friday to Sunday. So as you know, there are timelines required with those. Unfortunately, those have interfered with the work that we do need to get done for kids to come back, but we're working as hard as we can on the work that we need to do so kids can get back to school. So as soon as we can tackle those public records requests and get that, those things out of the way, we will have that policy, our goal, and my team worked through the weekend on a number of things. So as soon as we can get that policy draft to you, our goal is to bring it on next Monday. And then you would be able to vote on it at the February eighth meeting, so it would be in place for February fifteenth. We'd work with Lori's team. We've already had a number of pieces of communication that went out to our families regarding masks. There's really, really, really good material on the website regarding masks. And this policy will just be a board policy to reinforce what's already been communicated.
Melissa, I'm really sorry that your your department's been so overwhelmed with these records requests. I know it's it's been rough on you. Um, I know it's, it's been rough on you. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Um, Dawn, and then Andrew, and then we'll go back to round up.
Oh, Steve, I think subs are probably gonna be really important in this whole plan. Are they part of our vaccination schedule?
So the, the state has been uh, very forthcoming, which has been uh, a real plus for us. And, and Kristen may have more that she wants to add here. But uh, they have offered that uh, employees of the district, uh, and so that would be all of our regular full-time employees. Also subcontractors, uh, so of course throughout the state, uh, our, our bus drivers are not our employees. Uh, they work for uh, laymers and first student. But there are other districts across the state that subcontract um, food service or custodial services or grounds or things like that. Uh, and they have indicated that anyone who is a subcontractor would be considered uh, an employee of the district for purposes of vaccination. Uh, and that would also include for us, our substitute teachers.
Good. Um, the students that are sent home with COVID-related symptoms, what are, do, do we have a policy in place or how will that be addressed when they're allowed back to be, back into school?
So I'm gonna ask if Kristen wants to hop back on and, and uh, talk a little bit about how we're gonna manage that.
All right, yep. Um, so if they have COVID-like symptoms, which are using the same grading, gating criteria that we're using for our staff and employees when they come in through our COVID screening questionnaire, we would send them home and they would be home until they're tested or a minimum of ten days. We'd also send home siblings if it's a strong sense that they may have COVID. If they test positive, the person that tested positive would be home for ten days. All siblings would be home for fourteen days. Um, and if it's something else, like the, to go to the doctor, we find out they have strep throat, all their siblings could come back and the child would stay home until they're feeling better.
Okay. And then my, I guess my one last point I wanna make about having the K-one students come back earlier than the rest of the um, the rest of the elementary, is that is going to um, present a problem for parents who have multiple elementary students um, that will all be starting at the same time? And I say this because I have a sister who has, you know, uh, third grader and a first grader, so she would have one starting first grade at the same time as her third grader starting virtual. So just something to think about.
Um, Andrew had to step away from it. I'll go to, to Laura.
Kind of in the same vein of, as my last question, um, you know, uh, the idea of having contact, uh, contact tracers is, um, I like that. But uh, same kind of thing, what happens if people cooperate? I mean, you can't make them give up their medical information, right? Or maybe I'm, I don't know, maybe Melissa can answer that one too. But I suspect we'll have people that will not cooperate with contract, uh, contact tracing.
I'm gonna lean, lean a little bit on Kristen on this as well, because Kristen and Heidi have been doing a phenomenal job already with the contact tracing for what we have had to do with the staff and students that have been back in session. Um, we, we have a number of other sources, Laura, that we have been able to rely on with respect to contact tracing, uh, when it hasn't been clear exactly what has happened. Uh, our employees though have been great partners in contact tracing and have really stepped, stepped up wanting to make sure that their coworkers' health and safety is, is being protected and that everyone is, is being safe in, to that vein. So we have not had an issue with that. Parents have been really good with us too, uh, coming forward with information, um, with family members being exposed and that sort of thing. Um, so thus far, we've had good experience. It's just tedious. It's really, really, really tedious. And I'll let Kristen talk about, just give a few examples of some of the work she's already done and the weekends she spent contact tracing.
And I can probably talk best to athletics, because I've been doing um, the majority of contact tracing for athletics. So if we get a phone call that someone is testing, um, depending again on which sport it is. So for instance, wrestling, we immediately quarantine the entire team and then need to wait for that student's test results to come back. So it's contacting every one of those parents, um, and then giving them a guideline. And then once we know for sure that the child is positive or the student, then it's re-contacting them to let them know how long the rest of the athletes will not be able to participate. So we anticipate it will be very similar going forward with um, the students. And I agree with Melissa that, you know, parents have been great about sharing information. We are able, because it's a communicable disease, to also use the health department as a source um, to find out test results as a, as a variety of other ways also. So it, it's worked well. It's just a lot of work.
Kristen, I, I think I know the answer to this, but just to make sure. So everything that we would use for contact tracing, you know, in the motion, it says, you know, it's pretty vague in terms of quarantining and stuff. But that's a pretty standardized process. This isn't Green Bay's made-up uh, version. You're implementing what everybody else is.
Correct. So we are hi- having it to the highest standards that the CDC is, is recommending. So there are ways that um, you can test out of quarantine, like at a seven-day test. But when you look at the literature and the studies that are out there, people are testing positive up to fourteen days after an exposure. And we feel it is in the best interest of our staff and our students that we do maintain that fourteen-day quarantine. So we are following CDC guidelines. We're not making up our own rules.
Sure. And then uh, same uh, with the rapid testing, we wouldn't rely on rapid testing, is that correct?
Correct. So if someone is symptomatic and has a rapid test done and it comes up positive, you can be pretty assured that that is positive. If they have a negative test, they really need to have that longer, that PCR test done to verify. And we're recommending to staff and students to just go ahead and have that PCR test done. And it's so easy to do now, both at Valen and Pervia. It's, it's quick, it's easy. They don't need to counter anything.
And Eric, I just offered too, that uh, we were on the phone today with the Brown County superintendents and all of them have adopted that same uh, quarantine isolation protocol that Kristen just described. So all the districts in Brown County are using the same process.
Thank you. Andrew, you're uh, back. Do you, you want me to call on you or just give you a minute?
Yes, 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 please. Um, I wanna talk, I wanna get to, um, I wanna talk about trying to, you know, trying to keep kids with their teachers. And it falls into, I guess, two categories. The first one being, what do we do um, when no one's quarantined? And then a separate situation is, I chose in-person, but now I'm at home on, on quarantine. So maybe that's the easier question. If I'm on, if I'm home on quarantine, and of course, some, sometimes if you have COVID, you're too sick to participate, completely understandable. Many people, especially children, are fine to participate and some people will be on, many people go on quarantine who don't have COVID but are quarantined because of close contact, right? So what happens to the, what do the students do if they're out for two weeks? Um, what do they do during their quarantine?
Sure. So, and Vicky may wanna jump in here, but I think there's actually two issues, Andrew, that we might wanna address. Um, one is what happens when a staff member um, experiences that same isolation or quarantine that you talked about? And then one about a student. Um, so let me just talk real quickly about the staff member. So we have already talked about um, plans that if the staff member is, as you said, uh, testing positive, uh, uh, or uh, in isolation, uh, quarantine because of a close contact, um, but still has the capacity um, to provide instruction, uh, then we would be able to have them teach remotely from home. And then we would provide additional supervision in the classroom for the kids who are present um, onsite so that um, they have both adult supervision and support while they're in the classroom until that teacher returns. Uh, on the flip side, if you have a student um, who is uh, isolated or quarantined, in particular, um, in the cohort model that we proposed, uh, essentially you would simply be uh, in the, the off-site or virtual cohort the full week instead of being on for the two days. So you'd still have that opportunity to participate in direct instruction with the teacher, um, even if you were at home while, while uh, some of your uh, fellow classmates were onsite. So Vicky, um, I presume you've got some uh, information to add to that?
Yeah, that's, that's a good description of it, Steve. We're exploring a lot of options and trying to learn from other districts across the nation. But ultimately, in that scenario, it's most likely that the student that's quarantined would be able to log on to the classroom for new instruction, just as Steve had shared.
Okay. So, so you're right. So in the cohorts, we're, so in the cohorts, right, you've just shifted to being in, joining in the virtual group. And then what about, and so six, six-twelve during, during blended is covered. But what about, um, so then what about elementary? If we are in-person four days and an elementary student is on quarantine, how does that look then?
Uh, Nancy's here too. Um, so if, if she has more detail, that would be great. Um, but otherwise, uh, I would provide you with the fact that we're exploring similar model at the elementary level um, where the student would be able to log in during the new instruction period of time. Nancy?
Yep. I, I would agree, Vicky. Um, we are still exploring. Every situation's a little different. So we are um, exploring uh, multiple options. Um, so the, students would, what we can guarantee is students would have access to instruction.
Well, I never doubted that students would, you know, have some access to instruction. I mean, I appreciate that, but I, I never, that was a question I never had to ask. So I knew we were giving them some, some access. But type of, you know, what I'm gonna hear about is, and I say hear about, I'm gonna be asked about rightfully tomorrow is what, what is that access going to, to look like? Uh, that kinda goes into the other, um, another area here about um, that's related. I guess, to what extent are we, so to what extent are we looking at creative or outside-the-box solutions to accommodate teachers who maybe have a valid reason to be working remote? But since it's because of someone in their household, they're not getting the, the exemption. Now, one, one way of looking at it would be to count up the number of remote teachers needed, right? And however many remote slots there are, fill them with the ADA mandated people first. And then, then take your people who have other valid reasons for being virtual. And if you run out of remote spots, you're out of remote spots and then tough choices have to be made. Um, uh, that's not a model I'm advocating. But what, are we trying to do any better than that to reduce the number of people who might be trying to elect remote work and we don't have rooms? Such as two teachers, two teachers of us, two teachers in the same building. Uh, I'm comfortable being, I have no risk categories in my household. I'd like to go onsite. My partner's caring for an elderly parent wants to, in their home, wants to be remote. If those two people were allowed to discuss and, you know, buddy up and come up with an idea, that would essentially allow, that would create possibly a spot that we could use that would have come up a different way than just counting up the, the numbers. And sort of tied to that is, I guess I would like, could we be doing more to try to keep kids with their, you know, with their own, with their own teacher and our, as their, and part of doing that is being, I think, co-horted in the high school. Uh, I think the, I think in the, in the high school model, the keeping of, you know, classes together, although they might be A-B, is the lesser of evils. But the, i- it's, it's too hard. And so I guess I threw a lot out there. I'm just interested in, in responses about what role do creative solutions play in here? Or are we just going to, you know, I'm not worried about us meeting the letter of the law for ADA people. We've, that's never been a problem here. We've been strong in that area. It's alternatives that I feel we've not been as strong in.
So I can offer, Andrew, that I, uh, the kinds of questions that you're raising are exactly what the team's been considering. Um, and I'll just offer a, as an example for you, uh, challenges that we'll have at the high school level when we look at specialized classes. There may only be one or two teachers uh, that teach that particular course. Um, if, if uh, that teacher or, or one of those teachers um, has a legitimate reason that prevents them from teaching onsite, uh, the team has been talking about how they could creatively create an opportunity for that teacher to continue to teach while off-site and the students are onsite. So they are looking uh, at that. And, and you're right, that does uh, work more effectively at the secondary level. And it certainly works more effectively uh, in, in the cohort model that we're talking about. Um, at the elementary level, it's a little bit more of a challenge. Uh, uh, simply because as we move to having the kids uh, um, uh, onsite and, you know, hopefully before we get to the end of the school year, we've got kids uh, onsite. Certainly in this model, they're in at least four days a week already. Uh, it, it's a little bit more difficult uh, for elementary teachers um, to provide that uh, uh, instruction remotely um, than it is for our secondary teachers. Not to say it can't be done. Uh, but uh, um, and if the team hasn't been talking about it, but uh, we just recognize that logistically, it's a little bit more of a challenge at the elementary level. And certainly as you progress down in the grade levels, I think it becomes a little bit more challenging to be off-site when your kids are onsite.
Well, probably, right, but if, I, I think there's some, I, I think there's some potential merit to the idea of working in pairs if we have a proportion of the kids who are gonna be off-site. There's times it wouldn't work if you took a hypothetical building where no, no students chose remote or five percent of students chose remote. There probably aren't any like that. But if that happened, it, you might not be able to pull it off everywhere and I understand that. But again, I see, I, I, I'm just not feeling a lot of optimism that, and I just pulled one creative option out of the air of a, a buddy system between two teachers in a building who both had a fair chunk of their kids electing off-site. Um, you know, I'm not, I'm not okay with a system, you know, we have, we've been given, I've said this uh, all, all along. We've been given much regulatory exemption and um, and so forth, that we're not usually under. And I don't think we've always used that to the best of our ability. And I, I don't know how, I guess, I don't know how to put that in a motion, but I would like to see us try more unconventional things to keep kids with some access to their own teacher. And I said some access, maybe it's not every day. But I guess that's kind of, that's kind of my point there and then I'll um, I'll come back to other points later. Yep.
Mr. Becker, we agree with you wholeheartedly, uh, which is why when a student, if they choose to move to the virtual model, would still have the circles or uh, homeroom advisory, uh, they'll still meet with their original teacher during that period of time and with their original classmates. We, we wholeheartedly believe the same thing you do. And I also want to assure you and the rest of the Board of Education that we are doing our best as we model this out to have as many students as possible remain with their original teacher. Um, we don't say we can do that one hundred percent because we don't wanna give false promises, but we will do our best to make that happen.
I'm, I'm glad to hear about the advisory. So then advisory, whether or not it is now, obviously the time of day of advisory will have to standardize across the district for this to work. But that, that's important. Um, and then, okay, so I'll, I'll hold there. I think I have other, other questions and kind of some different, different areas. Um, so thank you.
Go ahead, Brendan.
I just wanted to ask one quick question, cause it has to do with this subject. Um, at the high school level, I, um, a lot of the emails talked about, you know, teachers concerned about having to teach virtually and in-person and things like that. But, but at the high school level, the, the kids who choose our virtual will be a completely separate class from the A-B cohort. Is that correct?
So I, uh, yes, uh, but I'll let, I know Vicky and Nancy are in here and their teams have done a, a really impressive amount of work on this. So I don't want to overstep here.
Yeah, I just want to make it, I, 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 I thought that's the way it was. And I, um, I know people have expressed concern that this A B cohort model sounds like the dreaded uh, high flex that we've been trying to avoid. And I just want to make sure it's clear as to exactly, you know, what, how this is different from that high spec model.
Nancy, do you want to talk about the virtual program?
The, the virtual program, I almost want to call it a, a group C. Um, so you have your A B court, um, A B, um, rotation, but then C is for your virtual program. And, um, for the, as far as the high school, um, Judy is on here. So if she wants to jump in, we're looking at so many different creative ways. To answer your question, Dr. Warren, I, I believe I'm hearing that teachers are concerned that they would have two preps, one to prep for a virtual and one to prep for students in front of us. That is one thing that Mr. Merly has, has asked us to take off the table. So that, that particular option of a teacher having to prep for a virtual and for a, um, and for a face to face, um, would not, a teacher would not be expected to do that.
But they would have, I mean, they technically would have kids virtual, you know, if cohort A is in person, they have cohort B at home. But, but the teaching of that cohort at home is going to be, the expectations for that instruction are going to be very different from the all virtual, the cohort C, as you called them.
Yeah. Now, and then that, right now, we're looking at very strongly in the elementary. So there's going to be a cohort C and those students, um, will like, uh, Vicky had mentioned, they will attend their, um, community circles and with their cohorts right now. And then, um, keeping in mind that if a class has certain number of students that are going to go virtual, I know that Anne and Andrea are staffing that out. So those students stay together as a, to go to their virtual teacher. So they may be in the virtual program altogether, all, all along, um, to make that group. Um, and that would be a group C if they choose to go full-time virtual or virtual for the entire year. Um, yeah, that, that's, there's so many different scenarios that are, that are happening, um, and going on right now that it's really hard to pin it down. Um, and it's, it's just hard to pin it down. I guess I'm, I'm going to ask my colleagues who are in that staffing row, um, and really making those critical decisions and working with their leadership, uh, to voice in here, please. That'd be you, Judy.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Yes, we do know that when we take a look at that cohort model at the secondary level, um, as Nancy just referenced, we're taking a look at a variety of different options. We know that we want to obviously have our students onsite at least, um, two days a week, um, based on what the board has been discussing. But sometimes there's just such a special piece when it comes to licensure and the high school, um, and some of the courses that it may make, um, maybe better for the students and the teacher to have the students stay with the, um, group that they are with versus going to a separate virtual program. And then, um, so let me give you an example of what we're doing right now for, um, at the GED class at East High School, where the teacher wants to remain virtual. Um, but yet we need students who are going to be onsite and the instruction, you know, having a para and or a monitor in the classroom while the teacher is still delivering instruction virtually may be a better option than trying to take students and put them into a virtual program. That's just one small example. So again, as the board makes their decision this evening, we are prepared to, um, operationalize that, um, in meeting the needs of our students.
And I guess just the last point, I, I would echo Andrew's, um, opinion that I, I would, I would support creative problem solving around this that, that makes sense within, you know, your actual numbers in your school. Um, I'd rather see that than trying to make this universal and, you know, everybody has to follow the same rules. Cause there may be some really obvious solutions in one school that can't be a solution in another school just because of the, um, percentages and the who's teaching what's and all those variables.
We would appreciate that latitude. Thank you.
But we don't do, we, we don't do that here much. We have, we have forms, we have multiple levels of approval for things. And it, it, we, things are as hard or harder to get approved now, even with some regulatory flexibility from the district and waivers of instructional minutes and things that would get in the way. So it, it sounds, it sounds good. But chances are, un- unless someone can convince me that I'm wrong, the, the hypothetical situation of two teachers who have about half and half buddying up for one to be remote and one to be onsite. I think nine times out of 10, that gets blocked somewhere in the process or the approval takes too long or, or it comes around to being approved at central office, but by the, but it's too late because we had to make staffing decisions because it's March 15th already. Is there a way that, and the answer is not always going to be yes. There might be something that's not going to work. I get that. But like, I don't know how a grassroots idea even has of something that might be good and something I may have never thought of, how it even has a chance to, to get there because we have, like I said, it took, it took board meeting action to unblock forms for lab science classes to happen. And verbally, we said weeks ago that lab science classes could start filling out the forms. So how like, I'm probably not, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time because I'm probably not going to be convinced anyways. And I can't, I can't write it into a motion. But if I could get some assurance, I guess here on camera that grassroots ideas are welcome and all ideas will get consideration at least. Um, I guess I'd feel better about that.
So I would offer that.
No, then I would say, then don't say it. If I mean, that's not how it's going to be.
So I, I would offer and, and I, and Vicky and Nancy and, and Judy, I believe, uh, Anne and Andrea are, uh, with us too and, and Renee. Uh, it's really been, uh, at least from my experience working with them so far, it's been all hands on deck. No idea is a bad idea. I, I, in the end, it's, it's what can we do that provides the most educational integrity for our students? If it's not something we've done before, uh, it's something we've entertained. Uh, you know, this idea, and I know I, uh, this came up, uh, through our secondary crew, but the idea that, uh, you know, we can find a way, uh, if a teacher is, is, uh, going to be, uh, offsite, uh, through approved processes and, and we can find a way to have them teach kids who are onsite. Uh, it, it's been a kind of, if there's a will, there's a way type of process. So uh, I have not seen, uh, resistance, um, to creativity or an unwillingness to entertain, uh, ideas that we've not explored before. So, um, Vicky or Nancy or any of our exec leaders from the schools, I'd, I'd welcome you to chime in there.
I would just say that I, I regret that you think that our administrators are blocking opportunities for doing what's in the best interest of our students, Mr. Becker. I, I don't know of any situation where, uh, there's been a holdup of the face-to-face process. Um, other than the one that I had mentioned at the, the board meeting, I think there were two maybe last board meeting. Um, FFA because we were waiting on the co-curriculars and offhand, I can't remember the other. Um, so I, I, I'm sorry that you continue to feel that way. Um, I would just say that our administrative team and our principals have been working really, really hard to provide students with the best care that we can get to them right now, including face-to-face opportunities.
Just to avoid a mischaracterization, I think I'm talking more about, al- although I do think there were cases that, that some, somewhere lower in the shuffle, some of these lab science requests didn't happen as fast as they could have. I, I know, and I was happy to hear that by, as the ball got rolling, 70 as of last week did, did go through. Okay. I'm talking more, I guess, I'm talking more about systems. If I'm, if I'm a young, i- if I'm a new, new to the district teacher and the other person who has half of their kids off, half of their third graders offsite is a new to the district teacher. Do I even know, do I even know that it's okay to bring my idea up? I think we, we probably would have to be actively, actively encouraging and pushing down from the top that, um, ideas from all levels are, are good and we're interested in hearing them. The, the best idea for how to, there might be an idea, I mean, there's not one best model, but the, it could be there's an idea that is just the light bulb idea for hundreds of K two kids that hasn't come up in a meeting yet that one of our, uh, one of our new to the district teachers might have, maybe. I just don't know how it even, I, I think there needs to be encouragement to submit all ideas and encouragement from, you know, to principals that we want to hear the ideas from, you know, you and your staff. And, uh, the answer might not be yes, but we want to hear it. Cause sometimes even if it's like, this isn't going to work, it might bring us to something else that's going to work. And, you know, we have a, um, there's just a lot of, um, I think historical and cultural factors largely about people who aren't in the district today. And I just want to make sure that we're encouraging that flow of ideas at all levels, not just those who are more senior and are in work groups and so forth.
All right, I'm going to go to Rhonda and then to Laura.
Um, okay. So I have a couple of questions. First, my, my first question is, are reading interventionists going to be allowed to teach face-to-face?
Sorry, I'm on mute there. I'm going to ask Nancy to chime in because I know they've been working really hard on how to, uh, both, uh, provide interventionist service, um, but then also try to adhere to the mitigation strategies.
Uh, thank you. Um, again, there's going to be, it's going to be based on the students' needs. Currently, all of our interventions, our virtual interventions and the student group is made up of multiple students from different classrooms. When we know when we go back face-to-face, we can't provide that from multiple classrooms with one teacher. The other piece would be that there, that students are in an intervention for a set period of time, anywhere from eight to 12 weeks. So if the, the intervention group is together and the teachers work in the intervention and the, the, uh, cycle for the intervention is not completed, they would stay intact until the end of that intervention. I'll give you a perfect example. One of the building principals in the meeting asked, I have, you know, five first graders, the interventionist, all five first graders, all from the same group. Is there any objection to, uh, meeting face-to-face or having intervention face-to-face with those first graders? Absolutely not. And so you really have to look at absolutely every single one of the scenarios that you're in, knowing that number one, our students need to be safe. Number two, those are fragile, are students in intervention, are, uh, fragile learners at the time. They're, uh, in a sink of learning, they're in a cycle of learning. And the teacher is progress monitoring and monitoring their progress, um, for, uh, future interventions or to exit the intervention. And so keeping all of those can, all into, in consideration, and we have a plethora of interventions. And so we can't just mix and choose. There, there's a system to this MLSS piece. But I can guarantee you that if, if all the conditions are met, it can safely be done. Absolutely. An interventionist can provide face-to-face intervention.
Okay. When you say conditions are met, can you, like, what are specifics?
Well, they, we would not be able to have depend, again, it depends on where we're at with CDC, how, how far we are with the pandemic and the measures. We'd have to follow those very closely. So conditions to be met, if they were going back today, they would be remaining in their virtual, um, intervention groups. Uh, they're in the middle of an intervention cycle right now. And so they would remain, and they're cross, um, they have cross representation from multiple students from multiple rooms across the school. Um, so for the conditions to be met, there would have to be a place in the school where there could be the social distancing from the teacher and either Plexiglas or the, the proper protection. And then, um, the student population in that, so if it was an intervention with three students, they'd all have to come from the same classroom. So those are the conditions that I'm speaking of. Like, we can't put them in a small group and bring individual kids from different classrooms into a small area to work with one teacher.
Even if they could social distance? Even if they could be six feet apart, let's say you have three students and you could space them six feet apart. And that, that wouldn't be possible?
If they're in the same intervention and they meet the conditions, it really comes down to the conditions in the building. Do you have a room that's large enough for that intervention to happen typically, then I'm not going to speculate because all the rooms are all different, uh, across the district. So once we, they're, they've completed their intervention cycle and the students, we first would like them to have, the students come from the same classroom. If that's not doable and they do, I mean, I'm not going to rule out that if they're six feet apart, they can't meet with the same teacher. There may be a time that they can do that. But I'm also not going to go on record and say, absolutely, they can meet with the same teacher from multiple classrooms. Cause I, I can't guarantee the conditions, the physical environment would be acceptable to having that happen in a safe, in a safe way.
But can you, can you go on record? I'm answering that if the room is big enough to space six feet apart with three students, even if they're not from the same classroom, is, is the physical space, is the criteria that they can be six feet apart? Or what is the, I know you've mentioned it a couple of times, like, what is this physical space that's contingent or is necessary to have that, I guess, be a possibility where you could have three students?
And maybe Kristin might, uh, be able to offer some, some input on this because I, I think one of the challenges obviously is we're trying to minimize the number of vectors out there. And so when you start bringing students in from different classrooms, they now become vectors back to their original classroom. But, um, Kristin, you may be able to offer some, some additional insight into that.
Yep, you're exactly right in how you just worded that. So we want to try to keep the same group of kids together. So if you picture, you've got your 3K group, we don't want to be mixing them with other 3K groups or getting in with kids of first grade. So if we isolate or need to quarantine, excuse me, a group of students, we want it to just affect that small group. Can you say, or can we say, if we had children, let's say there's four second grade classrooms, you bring them all into a room, they're separated by six feet. But can we say with 100% certainty that those kids did not spend 15 minutes within six feet as they're walking down the hall and things like that? So that's what we're looking at is trying to keep the same groups of kids together. So not, we don't wipe out large portions of the school. It's small little groups.
Okay. Eric, and then I have, go ahead. And then I have, um, a couple of more questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Rhonda. Um, Nancy, if this isn't the best for you, you can hand it to somebody else. But what about, um, our school staff that travel around the building or see multiple groups? So I, I think about, uh, you know, physical education, music, um, art, and then even our paraprofessionals or specialized monitors, ESL, th- those positions who are in multiple spots, what, uh, how do their jobs change?
Because the direct, um, decision makers are my colleagues in this group. I'm going to ask Anne, Andrea and Judy, uh, mostly Anne and Andrea, who have worked, um, closely with the staff in developing those physical education, art, music, um, playground schedules. So if I could have Anne and Andrea answer that question, I think you would be the most informed. Are they, are they on?
There's Anne.
There she is.
Oh, now she's off.
There's Andrea.
Andrea's on. There they are.
Thanks, guys.
Sorry, guys. I didn't mean to, uh, bring you in unsolicited like that, but, uh, just curious if you can speak a little bit. But uh, just curious if you can speak a little bit to um, you know, the the teachers in our building or the staff in our building. Who traditionally are in multiple classrooms, uh, whether that's uh, special ed paras, instructors. ESL and then um, gym music, Fayed, some of those positions, how does that look differently um, in in this model?
Well, I will start with this and then I'll let um, Andrea, my partner, um, chime in on it. But we have, we have worked to be sure that our um, our specialists. Do not have to travel to more than um, two buildings. And they used to travel, you know, we could have more travels than that. And our goal is to really have them only be in one building a day. And if they have to be in a different building, only uh, one additional and and that's just part of getting our scheduling done. We're looking at having um, depending on on what our, what the decision is. We're looking at possibly having a longer class period. So that the teachers don't have to be in and out of classrooms as much. But we're looking at them having the students travel to them with all the mitigation factors with. Passing in the hallways, everything set up that way, with making sure that students mask. And um, we're looking at different locations, for instance, for um, music. So that because our music rooms aren't always really large, but we we have access to bigger spaces. Some buildings have commons, we have our library media center that we can put, have kids in. So they would be, they would be distanced six feet for music and they would be masked. And we're looking at the same thing for art is to be sure that we can distance students and the same with Fayed. So you know, it's be nice if this was a time of year we could have our kids outside for Fayed, not looking really good right now. Um, but as soon as they can go outside, they would still be outside, either in the building or outside, but they will mask. For their their program. Andrea, anything I missed? Partner.
You have not, you comprehensively covered it, thank you. I really have nothing else to add.
Um, Rhonda had let me jump in, so I'm gonna go back to Rhonda and then I'll go to Laura.
Okay, um, so I just want to make sure to mention, when I look at the timeline in the motion that Brenda put forward, it puts our. I would argue some of our most vulnerable students academically and personally, um, still another five weeks out. Before they're in school. Um, I'd like to know. I mean, and and I have concerns about that for obvious reasons, um, the entire reason why we're even contemplating this. But what, what are the barriers to bringing them back within those five weeks? It's another five weeks yet, so what would we need to, what would need to happen? To have them come in earlier? Brent, I guess I'll ask Brenda, Brenda, what do you, like, I know you put that motion together and and you have that timeline. But knowing the struggles, knowing the personal struggles, right, we've heard from these students, we've heard from their families. Um, we've seen the data on the on the academics, um. What would it take to bring them back earlier? Or what do you feel it would take?
Um. I, I mean, I put those, my concern is that, and why I put those dates out there is based upon. Because we know the biggest challenge, I mean, our our burden or case burden rate is fairly high right now. Um, I don't know what direction it will go, there's a new strain coming, I don't know if that'll um, change anything. But but um, the biggest challenge for school districts that have been open. Is having enough staff to be in to staff their classrooms. And I just feel, I mean, I, I feel like. The one thing virtual instruction has provided us is consistency, I mean, students know every day what's what's going to happen. I'm concerned that if we open before we have our staff um, vaccinated, that we will have problems with staffing. And we'll have the system that that, you know, where we have what other school districts have, where you've got, you know. Classrooms or entire schools going into quarantine, um, kids that are quarantining themselves. Um, for for different reasons, I just feel like that vaccination thing is something that's that's gives us a layer of protection. That makes it much more likely that once we do open and bring kids back, we'll be able to maintain that, we won't have this back and forth. Um, so that's why I chose the dates, um, I uh. Anyway, that's.
Okay, so and so I hear that you're concerned and obviously vaccinations seem to be kind of the, you know, it's contingent on that. Are we as concerned about what's actually, I know we're concerned about what might happen, are we as concerned about what is happening right now? And are we as concerned about the fact that again, those students would have to wait five more weeks? Um, what do we feel are the liabilities for that for waiting five more weeks as far as how? How it's going for them, for the students? I'm very concerned about that. And if the votes are not here to bring them back earlier, what are we planning to do? Another five weeks, we will potentially lose more students. We will probably lose more families. So I just want to know if if there's any appetite at all for even coming back another week. Like even one more week. And and if not, um, I just, I just want to know if maybe I'm the only person having these concerns about those students. Um, but what can be done, is there anything we can do? To offer these, the students and their families some relief, that's five weeks out. It's another month in the winter.
Rhonda, I mean, I I can uh, answer your question, you're just kind of throwing it out there. So I mean, I think, uh, one, I I think it's. Uh, a mischaracterization to say that you're the only one who cares about the families that are struggling, that's. To be honest, that that hurts a little bit, I think that's.
No, 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 I didn't say that, maybe I am, I'd like to hear that you are and and I'd like to hear your thoughts on it. I, I don't want to ask anyone. I didn't say that anybody was.
Well, you you imply that you are the only one that maybe care.
I didn't, I, those words would never come out of my mouth, I'm bringing it up, I'm the only one bringing it up, that's a fact. So I would never say that, I, no, 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 that's actually not okay and that's not fair. I would never say that, but it is a fact and I'm the only one bringing it up, so I'd like to know how you feel.
Very good, I will answer that question and I'll let everybody else respond to see if they implied, if they felt that way. So they can answer that for themselves. I would say that we're balancing. Science with a pragmatic need to bring our kids back as soon as possible, it's it's a it's a matter of being responsible and responsive. And it's it's been a tremendous challenge to understand that kids are struggling and we're in a global pandemic. And to try to find that balance, and I've talked about it a long time, that. There's this spectrum of what safety means and what is the most important to you and how you find that that happy medium. And um, from a lot of the families that I've talked to and the people, the the conversations that I've had is. Yes, they want to come back. Um, and and some are, want to do it yesterday. And others, we don't want to find a responsible time to do that. So um, it's my hope that we can pass a motion today with a date. And again, for some people, it's not going to be fast enough, and for other people, it's going to be too fast. And they they wish that we, you know, would wait longer. So it's about finding that compromise. And I think that um, it it's a responsible way, we've talked about following the science. Knowing that the staff in our district that want a vaccine will be able to have one if we come back on this date. I feel like as a compromise for me personally, where I stand in in the term of safety, because everybody has a different interpretation of that rule. That's why I'm supportive of this. And I would hope that a family would say, okay, well, this isn't as fast as I wanted it. But the, and maybe it's not as many days as I want, but at least we have a date, we know what we can plan on and we can can go forward with that. So that's where I stand on this.
And I appreciate that and I can agree with you on all of that. But I guess what I'm wondering about is, okay, we we speak a lot about the families, the parents. But when it comes to the students, to the kids that we're talking about. I just want to share that I am very concerned about five more weeks of them being out of school. And there are other districts who have obviously had that concern as well, which is why they're bringing them back earlier. So I'd like to know, what are we doing? Are, why are we willing, I guess, I know it's, you're saying it's vaccinations, but what is the plan for these students for five more weeks? Because I'm just really concerned about them.
Yeah.
And 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 I'm not, and I'm not, in a million years, would I sit here and and tell people that they're not concerned? But I am bringing it up because it's, that's, that is what I'm supposed to be doing in this work, so.
Anybody else?
What we can do for them, I mean, what can we do for them for five more weeks?
Laura, did you want to speak?
Yes, um, I care about those students too. And I guess my response to that is I know that our staff and are bending over backwards to help as many kids they, as I can. In groups and individually and in in a myriad of ways that I'm sure I don't even know about. But here's, here's my take on that. A lot of this talk and a lot of our, the focus of our community has been on the six of us and our superintendent. And, you know. At some point, I got to ask myself, what is our community ready to do for these kids? Apparently, they're not willing to wear masks a lot of the time or to adapt their behavior in any way. That would help get their, these students back in school. So while we're struggling and doing everything we can to to help these children through this pandemic at every grade level. I guess I would ask my, you know, ask our fellow citizens, um, you know, what are you willing to do? And 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 in what ways are you willing to help? Um, and to our other elected officials, what are you willing to do? What are you willing to sacrifice? Um. I mean, our 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 district is embedded in our community in a lot of different ways. But I feel like we are doing a lot of heavy lifting on on any given day. And um, and every single one of us cares about those kids, of course we do. So, you know, my my, at some point, I I want to turn that around to other people and say, okay, can you help us? Can you modify your behavior and not go to to bars, um, you know, during the co, during the Packer game? Um, because that is, that is affecting community spread and community spread is dominating how we do our work now. And it has been for months. Well, that's my take on that.
So is, okay, and hard to argue with that. But nevertheless, we still have five more weeks of the students that we're speaking about who are out of schools. I just. It's five weeks.
Can I bring it?
I think, I mean, I did narrow the, I brought the high school kids in a week earlier, um, because I felt like. That was shortening the time that they had to wait. I do think I, um. Uh, you know, our high school, um, and uh, our secondary teachers have have worked. Um, very hard to, you know, meet students and and uh, interact with students in unique ways and things like that. I know it's not perfect, I know we've got kids coming in now for, I mean, we opened up our our co-curriculars, um. Just got a couple, we we all got emails from uh, show flyers that that are now um, having practice. Uh, we've got lab classes and and classes that are in person. Um, I think there's a lot of things we've done to try to mitigate the, I know it's. Obviously, we all want the kids back in school, but I think we've done some things to mitigate. And I also think that sometimes when you're in a situation that's that's uh, that you don't like and you're frustrated and you see no end. It it feels like, you know, how am I ever going to survive this? And I think just having a date that it gives them something to shoot for, um, I think that helps. Obviously, it, you know, they still have to do the virtual work that they're struggling to do. But um, I guess I'm just not knowing how much, um. The, knowing that our high school students and middle school students aren't going to be vaccinated. I feel like I'm I'm just not comfortable bringing um, students back in person um, before that time.
So ultimately, we weigh, right, we we're weighing that. It 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 just always feels like we're weighing what we're afraid might happen with what's actually happening and that's, that's. It's just frustrating to hear that, knowing how these, a lot of these students are not doing well. Mentally, physically and academically. And that other school districts have recognized this and they've brought them back. And and I have faith that we we can, I don't. Know why we wouldn't entertain possibly a little bit earlier, just something a little earlier.
Go ahead, Andrew.
So there's um, there's a couple of things, um. And one was an oversight that I should have caught when we did the last gating motion, but. I know we were thinking mostly about high school as being cases where there might be. Um, specialty reasons to, you know, to have a class come back and to have that application process. I didn't realize we defined it to only be nine through twelve. And I think the application process might be a better way to get students. If if we wanted to try to do something for um, some bilingual students or special needs students. That might be an easier way to do it because right now all we have is IEP is an as written. As written, the plan says that students whose IEPs require onsite. Are the only ones who are going to go into that category. And we all, we, we all know that that is not a simple or quick process. And there's a lot of give and take on that and just convening the meeting and finding everyone's time to do that is problematic. So I I don't know that there's a good. Structure right now in what we've created. That would allow, for example, a bilingual class to have a couple of of meetings. Or to have some of these smaller groups of kids who need more help. I don't know, I don't know how that happens at all outside of um. I guess outside of nine twelve, and I'm probably going to want to get something into a a motion about it later to allow. To at least allow all grade levels to fill out that application. But is there, is there more to it? Because I think, I think the idea of some contact of in person sometimes. Has come across as important to a lot of people, that's why people are. Just at the secondary level supportive of AB models and and this kind of thing. So where um, yeah, where are we with um? With that, like, what options are actually available to get maybe kids in sometimes or in small groups? Or not every day, but to do something before February fifteenth?
So I would offer that uh, and and Vicky may want to uh, chime in here. But uh, uh, we've emphasized uh, first, uh, returning face to face uh, instruction for those classes. Um, for which it is uh, impossible or difficult to do that work uh, online. And so that has been the priority is to bring them back first. Uh, we were working to balance the number of kids that are coming into the building. Uh, in order to ensure that we've got the appropriate spacing out there. Uh, so that's been the the thought process um, for uh, the students at the the high school level. Um, we prioritize high school over middle school, uh, simply because. Uh, the the sense of urgency of getting the high school students back in, uh, and so that's been a part of that process. So um, Vicky, I'd I'd offer it up to you if you get some more uh, input in response to Andrew.
That's accurate, Steve. Plus, we've moved to uh, approximately three weeks ago. A model that if it's small group or individual group of students that are struggling, such as you've suggested, Mr. Becker. That uh, they need not go through the formal face to face process. We've reserved that for um, academics, as Steve has mentioned, along with athletics and co-curriculars. But smaller groups, students struggling. But smaller groups, students struggling, can go directly through the principal and the supervisor of the school. So we've made that as a more simplistic process.
How many are doing that right now?
We aren't tracking that, because I suspected it would be a large number.
Okay. It's good if we have a lot of small groups, I mean, small groups can be done within all the rules, so that's good. I guess I don't have an, I don't have an immediate follow-up to that, I, I just want to make sure that we're, um, I mean, that, that's, you know, that's an important, I think that's an important piece, and I think, you know, struggling can mean a lot of different things, um, I'm sure we're looking most at academically struggling and, and bringing those kids in, so if, if we're in fact having, you know, that it's going to be March 1st before high school is going back, but we have, um, some of the kids who are struggling the most are maybe getting a couple meetings a week on, on site, I think that certainly is much better than just you've got nothing in person until, until March 1st.
Go ahead, Laura.
Oh, I just want to switch the subject a bit here and, and, um, talk about, um, food distribution. Uh, how would this plan affect food distribution to our families who choose to stay virtual? And, um, kind of, can you just, um, Lynette, hi Lynette.
Hello.
Just want to talk a little bit about what you see in the future about, um, being able to still, uh, feed kids. And as, as many as possible, as much as possible.
Yes, absolutely. What we will be doing with, um, the food service department, when we are in the cohort model, we will still be feeding the students who are virtual, and we will still be feeding the students who will be at school. I have, um, talked with all of the administration, and with all the executive directors. They have brought me into a meeting, and I've worked very closely with all of them. So we are, we have everything in place to feed the students. Um, we do not want to miss any of the students that are not on our, not in our district, or, um, the students that are in our schools. What we will-
I'm sorry, keep going.
Well, that is fine. Um, what we are doing is, uh, we will be making sure that we are practicing, um, safe food handling, sanitation. That is all, everything has been in place, and we have all of the procedures ready, and they have been, um, emailed out. So we feel very comfortable within the food service department. We've worked very close with health and safety, and facilities with us also.
I have no doubt that you, that can all happen, I, I'm actually, I'm, I'm most concerned about the children who are off-site. And, um, so what will that look like, will, will, will they still, um, will there still be places where they can pick up their meals? Is that how it's going to be?
Yes, yes. We will still have our feeding locations out of our schools. We still have volunteers that still want to deliver meals, as we have been delivering meals to our families. We, uh, also ha, I was just actually contacted by, um, one of our administrators asking, asking me what the schedule will look like. And I did not send out a schedule, I said that we would hopefully be able to send it out by the end of the week. And that reason is because of what we just, what you decide tonight at the board meeting. I didn't want to send something out, and then I would have to pull it back in. So we will make sure that we are available, we will be available around the clock. So with that being said, we will be available from the start of the school to the end of the school. We are going to be still feeding breakfast, lunch, dinner, and snack for all of our students who are virtual and who are on-site.
Lynette, you mentioned your volunteers, and, um, that kind of just triggered this, you know, we, we don't see you that often, you know what I mean, like, and so, and so when we do, I think maybe it went, might not, it might be a good time to just sort of remind people of the Herculean effort that has gone into feeding the children in our community, and you and your team, and your volunteers, um, I just can't thank you enough.
Thank you, um, and again, it's the team, and it's everyone within the district that makes this happen. We, um, the administration team in the, in the district, we are very solid, we work very well together. Um, I am not afraid to reach out if I needed assistance, or I have to ask a question, and I see that vice versa also. So I'm very proud to work with the team, I do.
And I know Pete Ross is part of that too, and I know he's on this, on this meeting, so I just want to give him a shout out as well, thanks Pete.
And the only thing that I would just say add is, um, Lynette is indicative of any of the operation team lead members that we work with, they're all ready to implement what the board decides and operationalize it. Lynette has done an outstanding job since the beginning of this, uh, pandemic that we've all lived through to this point, and, uh, her teams have worked extraordinarily hard to deliver many, many, well, millions of meals to, uh, area families, so thank you, Lynette.
Thank you.
Andrew?
So are all grade levels able to request to do these small groups right now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, when did we start doing that, because I've had, like, I've gotten from di- different, I'm not going to be any more specific than to say, a wide range of grades, I got like, a lot of texts during this meeting saying I didn't know that was a thing, so sometimes we have good intentions that don't get communicated out as, as wide sometimes, that, that happens, but i- if, if it is available to all grade levels, um, and the process is streamlined, then people just need to be checking in with their buildings? Or how do, how do they do it? As possible, maybe, so I, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm, if I'm getting a question sent to me in any format during the meeting, I might, I might try to address it, I'm not going back and forth, how long ago was it, or something, so is it fairly recent that we, um, streamlined it and, and just said that the, the buildings could approve it, or has that been that way for a while?
No, no, this is fairly new, Mr. Becker, I, I thought I had shared it with the board at the last board meeting.
I think I'm more just making sure that, I, that does sound fair, I didn't know if it was across all grade levels that it could be-
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Laura.
So these are just a couple of things, I've got a pretty long list of questions, um, two, two kind of, um, facilities questions, I think, is how are we, um, as far as obtaining HEPA filters, are we pursuing that? Um, and also, how are we in, um, and, uh, uh, do we have enough, uh, Plexiglas and, and things like that, that we can, um, help? Um, offer some protection for teachers and, and where, where we are able, um, to put that in between students or whatever, this can, I, is there any way to kind of, um, get an update on where those two particular items are?
Um, thanks Laura, let me start, and I know Mike is chomping on the bit to, to get involved in this meeting as well. Um, a- as I said before, all of the operation team leaders are actually present at this meeting, viewing the board meeting. Uh, but we're ready to operationalize what the board would have going forward. Uh, one of the things that I was kind of hoping is that we wouldn't get all of our kids back in a, in a huge wave, but rather in smaller waves. It appears as though the board may choose to have larger waves, and we'll be able to work through those issues on operational aspect and be able to get them into the buildings. Uh, one of the things that I think is, um, is important for the community to know, that this district over the last decade, and this, this way predates me, because I've only been around here for a short time, but over the last decade, has really worked hard to, um, boost its, uh, HVAC systems throughout the entire district, getting them to be very modern, even though some of our buildings are older. Uh, the HVAC systems within the buildings are modern, we're, we're certainly compliant with respect to the air exchanges that are required by, um, uh, state code. Uh, we exceed those requirements in all of our buildings, and we can jack those up, and I know Mike's got a plan in place to do that, so Mike, I'll let you take it away.
Okay, yeah, so as Pete said, uh, we've spent several years now on updating a lot of our mechanical systems, so throughout the district, our air handling and mechanical systems are in very good condition. Um, from, you know, recommendations from uh, the CDC, is that, um, we use our central, um, air handling systems to move the air. Um, they were, they're much more effective than trying to use individual room, um, air cleaners. Um, most of the small air cleaners that are, are available, um, have not been tested as far as the COVID-19. Um, to get, you know, um, small ones that do address COVID-19, um, they're fairly expensive, like around the $800 mark. And we would need about 1,500 of those, at least throughout the whole district. So the most effective way is to, um, use our ce, our central air, uh, air handling systems. Um, so what we have done is, um, we've made some modifications to the use of our systems. We're starting them, um, three hours before students arrive to flush the buildings before anybody enters the building. Um, throughout the building, we're opening our fresh air in, uh, intake dampers, a 20% additional to bring more fresh air in and exhaust more air. And then at the end of the day, we're um, going through and flushing the buildings again at the end of the day for two hours to get all clean air back into the buildings. Um, the other thing we're doing is, normally we replace filters twice a year. Um, we just did it over winter break, and then normally we do it during the summer. Once we have students back in the building, we'll be replacing, uh, filters on a monthly basis. Uh, to go talk to about your, the Plexiglas, um, we've built hundreds of shields of Plexiglas, um, most of the ones that we built are going to be used in the main office areas, reception areas, um, those areas, um, and then we have purchased um, eight, 8,000 individual student shields. So those, um, will be able to use, um, so if we have our, you know, cohorts back in, or even, um, 75% of our students, you know, that's about, um, you know, 15,000 students we could have in the building. And that would put a, um, a base, um, individual student shield for every other student.
And would that be, all those items, um, can those be, uh, funded with CARES Act money?
Yes, they have been purchased, and, um, I think CARES Act and the other, um, money that we received from the government is what we've used to purchase those today. Pete can answer that a little bit better than I can.
I have a weird question about these, um, individual student, um, shields. Just out of curiosity, can you tell me what those cost per unit? I'm just curious, are they very expensive, or are they, you know?
I believe the last ones we ordered were about 20 or $21 apiece.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's also important for the board to understand that when the pandemic broke out, um, Mike and his teams have been, um, you know, really on the ball and on the spot with all kinds of issues, um, you know, going all the way back to March and the school closure, and and his teams have worked very well. Uh, in terms of procuring, uh, protective equipment and sanitation equipment, and/or sanitation supplies and/or masking supplies, uh, the, the price of all of that, I, of all of those items has come down. Uh, at the beginning of this pandemic, they were extraordinarily expensive. Uh, we did purchase some limited supplies to begin with, and as we, you know, uh, went through the summer with the understanding we'd have kids back in school in the fall, as, you know, the burden rate was going down and everything was looking good. Um, uh, we had a supply purchased so that we were ready to start school. So from an operational perspective, with respect to sanitation equipment, or sanitizer, hand wipes, masks, all that stuff is sitting in inventory, and we're ready, and we're, we'll operationalize that when, uh, we get children back to school, but the point of the matter that I do want to make is as we go forward, it's less expensive now, and it's more easy to procure. Our procurement specialist, um, administrator that we have in charge of procurement, Jake uh, Elverston, has indicated to me that, you know, we can get most of the stuff now within a week. Uh, so while we have supplies that will last longer than a week, we'll be able to replenish those supplies.
Even Plexiglas, because I know at one point that was extraordinarily hard to get.
Plexiglas as well is easier to get, there's probably a three-week lead time on, on individual shields, but we've purchased 8,000, which is almost enough to go one-to-one. Uh, uh, especially if you're bringing back your 612 and cohorts, where you're only bringing half the kids back at a time, that's an advantage of the cohort model, certainly.
The la, the last shipment of shields that we ordered took us about a week to get, so they are. And they're, they're, the student, even individual student shields really aren't that technical, Plexiglas, they're, they're a plastic-type material.
But i- it's also important for the board to understand that the number one, uh, safety mechanism that we have to, everybody has to do, it, it's not, not just our children, but every single adult, and I wish all of the adults out in the community would as well. You got to wear your mask. Um, you know, we've seen, and we've witnessed, open-air events all over the country where people are not masked, and they're super-spreader events, so if you're outside and you have 100% outside air at you all the time, you can still get the, uh, virus without wearing a mask. Everybody's got a mask up, our whole country should be masking.
Pete is correct, uh, the shields do not take place of the masks, um, they're just a second defense. Um, the masks are the most important.
I couldn't agree with you more, Pete, thank you, guys.
All right, if there aren't any other board member questions, we can, I, I don't know if there, go, go ahead, Laura.
Um, so I suspect this is going to pass tonight, and I, I have some, I have some, a lot of trepidation about this, but the one thing that I, I, I want to talk about is how we are going to, um, because inevitably there will be um, people that get infected, they'll be spread in our schools, they'll be, even with teachers, um, vaccinated, um, that, there'll be classrooms that have to be quarantined, and we have a lot of schools and a, a huge amount of students, so I know that the districts around us, um, put out their own versions of their information. I would like to, I would like some kind of, um, assurance that our data um, is going to be very accurate. I want, I want to know that our public, when they see what is happening in our schools as a result of our decisions tonight, um, that they can count on that, that those numbers to be accurate and dependably, independently accurate. Um, because I don't know if that's always the case in other, in other, um, districts, and I've heard a lot of varying, um, varying information about that, let's put it that way, so have, have you talked, Steve, have you talked amongst yourself about how we're going to do that? And should we do that by individual school, or, well, how will the, whatever happens tonight change what we're already doing?
Sure, so a couple things, so, uh, Krista may want to chime in and talk about, uh, how we gather information. Uh, and I assume by that you're talking about, um, how we know, uh, uh, information about who needs to quarantine, who needs to isolate um, among both students and staff, so you've got a, a number associated with it, and then um, Josh has been out looking at dashboards, uh, that we, we may want to emulate um, as we model one that allows us to look at, uh, both the district as a whole, but then also look at individual schools um, as we go through that decision-making, and so, um, Krista and I, I'd offer you the floor to talk about how we're getting- as we go through that decision-making. And so Kristin, I'd, I'd offer you the floor to talk about how we're going to gather that information and how we'll know about those issues for isolation and quarantine. And then Josh, if you've got any thoughts to add about how the, the dashboards may look so that people will be able to readily access that. So Kristin?
So one thing I can say is that our data is only going to be as good as what we're supplied with because we don't have a way to run a mass report to know who is actively either testing quarantine or isolating. So we need to start with a point of information, a point of contact. Someone needs to let us know. So let's talk about employees because that's probably the easiest because we've been working so much with that. So when we find out that an employee is testing, we immediately put them into quarantine until we get their test results. If their test results are negative, they're released. And if they're in isolation because they become positive, we flip them into a different category and then have them out the appropriate amount of time for their isolation period. Or if they have children that have tested positive and we need to keep someone out for that extended length of time. And we've been working extensively with Josh coming up with our own program to really do a great job of monitoring this because right now we've been working off the spreadsheets and he's come up with a program that we feel is going to really, really help us with that. And even to the point of being able to enter in a classroom, say a student was positive, we can enter all those other students that we need to quarantine literally within minutes. So it's, it's super exciting to have that. So there's a lot of follow-up that's being done. Our nurses are making a ton of phone calls, even with our students that are currently off-site. If a teacher or clerical or someone finds out they're positive, we do follow up with those families currently. But again, as they're off-site at this point, it's hard to get an accurate number because not everyone is, is sharing that information. It'll be a little bit easier when they're onsite because they'll be absent. We can follow up. I can sure that the athletic trainers have been doing a great job. If a student has missing a practice or a game, they are asking that student why they were missing and then following up. And I, I get phone calls up until nine o'clock at night sometimes saying, hey, Johnny didn't show up tonight. And this is now what he's telling us. And then following up with that family going, please get them tested so we know what's going on and we know that they're safe to return or needing to quarantine. So a lot of legwork, a lot of footwork and, but it is only as good as the information that we're provided.
Can we use CARES Act money to help with that?
I'm not sure what that would look like.
We have the ability, Laura, to use CARES Act money for solving issues with respect to COVID, absolutely. One of the things that we're trying to do, especially when it comes to purchasing, what we need to have our kids in school safely as we can possibly make it, is to use other resources as well than just the CARES Act money because we believe that we're going to need additional personnel when we have our children back in school. And that's going to go on not only this year, but next year as well. We have until October of 2022 to do our final claim for the CARES Act. So we can spend money all the way up into that time. And it's, it's hopeful that there will be resources available so that we can have additional hands as we have our children back in school so that they can be more successful.
Thank you. You know, mostly just my concern with this is that our district is known for, as a district that puts out accurate information and that our community can look to our district and on our website and know that what they're seeing is accurate. And then, you know, as up to date as possible. I know it's hard. It's very hard, I'm sure. Up to date as possible on the information that they're seeing. I just can't, we're such, we have such a big footprint in our community. And we have so many people in our buildings that I feel like this will be a very, very important part of the work going forward.
Yeah.
To a board request, Laura and Mr. Merly had asked Angela and I to put together a report I'll give at the next board meeting with respect to what we've spent so far, what resources we've used, what resources are available so that there'll be a clear understanding. One of the things that I want to be very cautious to the community about is that, you know, when we claim to receive our reimbursement from the CARES Act, we'll do so on a quarterly basis. So we've only put in one quarter so far with the CARES funds. Everything that we've purchased would be on that claims report. And I'll have a report for the board so you can view that. We're in the process of putting together our second quarter claim for the CARES Act and that may be available at the time of the board meeting as well.
Pete, I have a question about that. Pete?
Go ahead, Brenda.
What's the balance on our CARES Act available funds? Like what?
I'm going to give you the, the amount of money that we have in our CARES fund at 7.9 million, of which we have to share about 450,000 or so with the private schools. We've done a claim of 710,000 already and I can provide you with that detailed claim in the report I'll give to the board. On the 25th, you'll have that information. So we're getting ready to file our second quarter claim. I don't have the detail on that yet, but I think that claim is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars.
Okay. So we were given the 7.9 million. You said we have to share how much with the private schools?
450,000 gets shared with the private schools. So.
The rest is ours.
Yeah. And that's CARES Act and it's Gears Act money. But I have to caution the board because there's never a simple explanation when it comes to school finance for some reason. We purchased about $485,000 worth of protective equipment and sanitation supplies and sanitation equipment using what we thought was going to be reimbursed from the federal government through FEMA. FEMA put out the, the request for schools to submit claims for reimbursement to that organization. When we first were, you know, working through some of the throes of the coronavirus to begin with. So we put our claim in and have heard nothing from the federal government. We're all disappointed and it's not just Green Bay schools. It's our neighbors as well who also put in FEMA requests. So we're concerned that there may not be any reimbursement through FEMA, especially since it's been crickets. So we may have to divert some of that to the CARES resources.
Was there a reason why you didn't go through the CARES Act to begin with?
We're trying to utilize all other resources to provide enough funds for the CARES to last through the entire two years of the program. Again, we have until October of 2022 to spend the money.
And did I hear you say correctly, you can actually purchase, or you can acquire personnel with that, those funds?
Yes, you can. If it's COVID related. So remediation, mental health services, nursing, all of those things that would be COVID related, you can use.
On-track tracers?
Yep.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Um, Steve, if, if this passes tonight and this doesn't have a gating criteria on it, what kind of, this kind of tags in with, with Laura, you know, what, what kind of metrics have you thought about that will, that we can follow and track? And maybe Kristin can, can weigh in too, that are going to be important for us to follow and track in terms of, are we doing okay? Can we stay open? You know, th- those kinds, those kinds of questions. I mean, I know we'll have individual classrooms who are quarantined and, and things like that. But I'm looking more at the big picture of, of making sure that we're keeping track of the right things. So we know that we're staying safe and can remain open as a district.
Sure. So we've looked at a lot of different dashboards in particular, and Josh is live on the screen right now. And I'm going to ask him to jump in here and just share some of the data points from some of those dashboards that we've looked at.
Sure. And you, you're right. If there, the proposal on the table here eliminates the gating criteria, but I'm assuming that last clause in your motion, Brenda, for the administration to develop criteria for transition to virtual learning due to transmission of COVID is coming up with some kind of alternate criteria to know when to close and, and things like that. We've seen, the, the most compelling one that I've seen is actually from Hudson, Wisconsin, that takes a look at both the burden rate and the rate of infection within the school community itself. So you can have in-person school with a high community rate as long as your school community rate is low. Or if the community rate is very low, but you're having an outbreak at a school that, that triggers a set of actions. We would, we would match our dashboard though to, to, to whatever, you know, the, it's the job of the administration, obviously, to, to bring back this criteria for when we transition back to virtual. I'm assuming that's going to be board approved as well. And we would design our dashboards around that. I'm confident that we have the data to do that at the building level for both employees and students. As Kristin said, we're, we have developed a single system that, that allows both cases to be managed for both students and staff. And we get granular data down to the building level, along with the length of quarantine and isolation and, and things like that. So that's the information, the spread within the school community is, is information we're going to be able to, to accurately, we'll be able to accurately provide a picture of, of people that have disclosed what's going on with them with respect to COVID. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Dawn and then Andrew.
Okay. Now Josh, I'm going to put my IT hat on because I've been looking at a lot of dashboards too. And one thing I found really helpful was Howard Swamaco has a really nice little graph with their historical data on there. A lot of schools don't. So that, just a plug, I really like that. It paints a pretty clear picture of kind of how things, how things progress through fall. And you can see at what point they closed and what happened to the numbers there. So I would like to see some ki, it doesn't have to be, you know, drill in detail, but have some kind of historical data or graphing available that we can watch that trending.
That's on our current district dashboard too, at the district level. We don't have that broken down at the building level. And that gets to be a challenge too, just from a sheer real estate perspective, when you've got 42 schools as opposed to what the nine or whatever that.
Yeah, no. And I don't think it needs to be, I don't think you'd need to have historical, historical data to graphing. But yeah, it would be, having that I think is important.
Go ahead, Andrew.
So while I do support some moves to get us, to get us back sooner, I'm also pretty committed to not leaving tonight with nothing, nothing in place that says this is what returns us to virtual. And I, I can't see how I can vote for a plan that says that we'll find out later what the rules are that would force or return to virtual if, if COVID spiked. I, I've been studying this a lot. I, I think it's very likely that we will not climb back up where we were before because, you know, I mean, one thing is that unfortunately so many people have had it. And then, but also with the vaccines starting to come into play, I, I don't think it's likely we'll see those huge numbers again. But if we did, and while I'm certainly open to something that is a combined model of community cases and school district cases like, like Hudson, that that makes sense. I, I think it's important that there at least be some kind of a check-in process. So until something new is available, people can know that there are, there are still rules. Because otherwise we end today with a decision that cases could theoretically be back at 2,000 and there's nothing in this motion that would say that we stop. And I'm, I'm just, I'm not voting yes on something and then waiting for what is, what are the safety rules? I think we have to start, I think we have to have something there that is a mandatory trigger of virtual. And then if you want to come back with a new formula, hopefully sooner than later, we could do that too.
You know, can I just ask a clarifying question? So if we were to adopt a ceiling, if you will, that, that was an automatic trigger for virtual, would you still presume that, that to, to have delegated to the administrative team, the, the process of dealing with individual classrooms and schools that may have other criteria other than that ceiling to determine when those classrooms or schools may need to be offsite?
Yeah, I think, I, I guess I'm talking about, sure, if there's, if there's a situation where the district is, the district is doing well, but there's a, a school that there's an out of control outbreak. Sure. I, I remember, well, it must've been about, I have to look at what the day of the week was, but like one of the, well, the last Wednesday before spring break, I think, I think Brendan and I had a meeting with, with Michelle and I remember talking about, yeah, would we be closing like a whole school then? If there were more than a few cases or would we be just sending the, and of course then that was probably about March 13th and then things, you know, dramatically took a turn. I certainly would, you know, yeah, and I, I, sure, if there's a out of control outbreak at, at a building. But I think there has to be someplace, and it, again, I, I would, I would like to see the refinement that could come from probably before the opening date of, hey, here's how we're going to look at a, a combination of, of things. But I think there needs to be some kind of absolute ceiling, at least until it's replaced by something else. And I think that's, I think that's reasonable. And I, I think it's, I think it needs to be something that people can, you know, look at and know that we're checking, you know, we're checking this number weekly to determine what happens the next week. And I, if a new gating criteria comes in, I think it should also be, we need to say what day of the week we're checking and that it's effective for a week from today or, or something like that.
Go ahead, Brenda.
I guess I'm, I'm intrigued, Josh, by the dashboard you described from Huron. Is that what you said? Hudson, Hudson. And, uh, cause I'm a little bit, you know, we've, I've been hoping at some point that we will get really specific guidelines from either Public Health in Wisconsin or CDC. And I, I don't really, I don't have not seen any entity come out with gating numbers that say, you know, this is when you have to close. This is your top number. You have to close no matter what. I know CDC originally put out their, their numbers. Those numbers really just tells us what risk there was. I'm surprised those numbers haven't changed because I think we know more about the spread in schools and the risk in schools and things like that. So I'm, if I, I wouldn't know, you know, I, I, what I don't want to have happen is that we pick a number that says we have to close, but we look at our school data and we're not having any trouble. We're, we're doing well. We're following mitigation. People, you know, we have teachers vaccinated. We, everybody's been careful. Everybody's been good. And even though the community spread is high, we're doing okay. And I don't want, I want it to be, I want to be able to evaluate how we're doing in our schools. I don't want to have an automatic number where we shut down at this point unless, I mean, I know we have transition of government tomorrow and I know there's going to be a plan coming out and there may be a number, some numbers attached to that that are, that are more specific. But at this point, the, anyway, that's, I'll stop there.
So I hate to throw a curveball in the works here, folks, but I just have to share this with you. I was just notified that apparently the government, Wisconsin State Government has put a little wrench in the works here. They've approved that those over 65 in the 1B group are going to go before teachers. And so they are in line to get vaccinated before our staff do. They will fill most of the slots for the next two weeks. And even though the providers are working really hard to open new testing slots as fast as they can, it's likely that because it's a first come, first served basis and because those over 65 are now in line in front of teachers that we probably are not going to see our, our education staff being. we probably are not going to see our, our education staff being vaccinated for the next two weeks. I am sorry to share that. It literally just came in.
So Steve, if I'm looking at my calendar, that would have our staff being vaccinated the first week in February potentially as the earliest?
I'm presuming that's the case. So I, I think it's two weeks from now. I'm not sure if that means two weeks, the, the 1B was slated to start, I, I know, rolling process, but most significantly next week on the 25th. So I'll be honest with you, I don't know enough about this, Dawn, to know if that's, if that's our teachers being in line for, I'm trying to look at my dates here, whether we're in line the week of March 1st or whether in line, we're in line the week of March 8th.
Okay. So if it's two weeks from today, tech, it would technically be that first week in February for the first dose, and then the last week in February for the second is what we would be looking at if it's two weeks from today. But we don't know if it's two weeks from today or two weeks from next week.
Yeah, that's right. I, I literally just got this. So I, I have not had a chance to do any more investigation yet. So sorry for that bad news. I just wanted to make sure that you had that as you were wrapping up your conversation tonight.
Um, I saw Andrew and then Laura.
Right. So I, I guess I still, it's too big of a, it's too big of a jump for me to go from, we will open based on, based on when COVID is lower to we will, I, I'm, I'm okay with trying opening based on a date, but I need, I, I think for me to support, there has to be, at least until something more refined is available. I think there has to be some kind of safety valve that if we're at an extreme level of community cases, it, it's, it's, it seems to me that even people who supported a much quicker return to school perhaps started saying not so fast when we were over the 1,000 level of case burden. I, I guess I would throw that, I would throw that out there as perhaps a point that would. And again, we're, we're below it, we're well below it. I don't think, I, I, I'm optimistic that we'll never see that again. But I think to, to leave tonight saying we have completely removed the level of COVID from any formal decision process, that's, that's, speaking of someone who is generally associated, for what it's worth, with, you know, wanting to maybe try to get back sooner than some, I think I'm kind of a centrist on the issue. But yeah, I, I can't see there being nothing related to COVID. And as you know, I've been clear about it before, pass it today and we'll refine it later is something I can't, I can't do either because I don't know what the leader's going to say.
Brenda and then Rhonda.
Um, yeah, Andrew, I was talking about the Hudson model combines case burden and school data. And so I would like it to be a combination rather than an absolute number.
Yeah, we just can't, I don't think we can have that tonight. And I'm not willing to leave tonight without something unless you're proposing, we would do the Hudson model adopted, their, theirs would have to be scaled for the size of our district though. And also I, I don't know, I think the Hudson model, they're doing much better with COVID there. And I think the community, the community access of it doesn't go remotely close to where, where we are either. I, I, on my first look.
So Andrew, if I hear you correctly, what you'd like to do is, is amend the motion on the table to add something like, and an automatic trigger to shut down at X burden rate, which will be replaced when the administration comes forward with a new plan. Is that what you're saying? You just want something in place when we leave here today to get us to, between the gap of today and when we move next time? Is that correct?
Yeah, but I think the, I think the board has to approve whatever the next thing is. I don't think the administration can remove the, so it couldn't be, it couldn't say with virtual being, virtual being re-triggered at blank until the administration revises it. It would have to be until the board, which I think, I think would happen before school would start. But the problem is, especially being in a three-three situation, I, I don't want to be stuck at, I don't want to be stuck. I want people to know that there's, I want people to have who are, and it's, it's not that anybody thinks one is important and one is unimportant, but for those, those who have asked me to look first at COVID safety, I need to be able to tell them that at, at least there is an emergency trigger in there till we come up with something more refined. And that's, that's an important valid, valid point.
Rhonda and then Laura.
So Andrew, are you saying that this would just trigger a virtual response or an emergency board meeting to discuss next steps?
Well, I think there's, to, to me, I, I mean, I think there would be times that you might call for an, for me, I guess the emergency board meeting maybe comes in if, say we picked 1,000. If, if we're below, if, if we're, if we're hanging around, you know, below that or well before that, and then we reach the, the check date, which is Monday and it's 700, it's been hovering. And then all of a sudden on Tuesday, it's 800, Wednesday, it's 900, but the official check day was Monday. To me, that kind of a spike is what would trigger the emergency board meeting when it's something unusual is happening between the cut date and the, and the current.
Okay. Can I just, hold on. So what I want to understand though, is that, are you asking, are you, or what is on the table? That it would be, a board meeting would be triggered or the administration would just reverse course? I, I, I want to understand who's making the decision and at what point?
I think, I think, I, I think, I think an absolute decision has to be made by numbers. And if the administration wants us to do something other than the numbers, then they have to do an emergency board meeting. Um, that, that's where.
Well, the board does not, I guess, in my hearing that the board has no, they can be triggered without a board, board meeting, basically.
Well, right. I want people, because I don't want people to, yeah, I, I think there, just like we were trying to do with, with gating criteria, we were trying to get people to be able to look and know what's happening and know where things are going. So I, I'd also like people to be able to look, to look at our dashboard and see, oh, geez, we're on the bubble of maybe having to go virtual. That's important for families to plan as opposed to, oh, the numbers are high, there'll be a board meeting.
And I get that. But I, but I want to understand and what the really, the only thing I need you to answer is when would the board meeting happen and why?
I would think the administration would ask for an emergency board meeting either if we were.
They don't have to, but they don't have to.
Right. But we can, we can. I mean, two members can, two members can request, the president can call a special, two board members can sign a paper to call a special. It's, it's not that, it's not that hard, it's not that hard to get. I mean, if, if what others really prefer is an auto trigger for an emergency board meeting, I mean, that might be, you know, that might be okay. I just want, I just want people to know that if we're, if we shoot back up to, you know, if we shoot back up, God forbid, to the 14, 1500 level we were at before, where even most of the people most strongly in favor of opening were saying something a little different to me. They were saying, I get that it's not yet, but I'd like to get back quickly when it starts to go down. I think we all heard probably some of those when it was really at its bad peak in November. Yeah, I don't, I want people to know that there is a point, that there's a point where things are just so bad that we would hit the, we would hit the pause for a week, just like we're preemptively.
What is that point? What is that point?
I would think, I would think for sure, if we hit 1,000, it should, if, if we hit 1,000 on a weekly check, it should trigger the pause button for a week.
What is the pause button for a week though? I mean.
It would trigger virtual, it would trigger virtual for a week if we, if we went over 1,000 on the check date. So I'm, if we hit, if we were over 1,000 on a Monday, it would make the following week virtual. But if it's a, if administration had some findings that it's, you know what? Yeah, the community spread is bad, but look how low it's been in the schools. Everyone's doing what they're supposed to do. Emergency board meeting and we, we waive it if, if 1,000 isn't a serious problem anymore. That, and I'm talking about, I don't think we're ever going to get to a thought, we probably will not get to a, a thousand again. But I.
I'm actually not concerned about the numbers. I am about the process to actually make a decision because it seems very all over the place. So.
Yeah. So I think special circumstances like it was under, it, it didn't reach the trigger, but things are looking very bad for some special reason in the last couple of days. I think that's where you have to do the emergency board meeting route. But I think, I think there should be an automatic trigger somewhere. And I think that's probably a weekly check of, of 1,000, which will probably be replaced before the schools even open by something else. But I'm just not leaving anything as, willing to leave anything as undecided or we'll get back to you or admin will write the rules, especially in a three-three board.
I'd like to know how, what Brenda thinks about that.
I'm, I'm wondering if we can ask our administration actually to go back and look at this and bring something forward next week. I, I mean, I, I think you, you have to decide if you like this motion and, and realize then that next week we would have the ability to have input as to what the metrics are going to be. I don't know that we're going to solve this problem tonight. I do understand the emergency board meeting proposal. You know, I think it's important that we have the ability to assess that. And again, I, I mean, going back to, I don't want, I, I want the board to be able to assess it because if we reach 1,000 and things are good, then we might do something different than just close the schools. So if we had a top number and it triggered a board meeting, instead of closing the district, I'd be done with that.
I'm definitely.
I'll probably, I'll probably have that.
Myself. Of that which would be a board meeting, not a, not a virtual brief response.
Do you know what the timetable is for an appointment process? Because being in a three-three situation is kind of relevant at a critical time. I mean, I think usually it's been around a month or so.
Melissa's actually developing that timeline and will bring it forward to the, the next meeting. I don't know if she has it done right now. But I guess from my standpoint, I'll just, if I can just offer a thought on it, you know, if the idea is that when we reach a ceiling, in this case, Andrew's suggesting 1,000, that when we reach a ceiling, either one, two things would happen. Either we would automatically move to a week of virtual instruction or it would trigger an emergency board meeting in order to determine the next steps. If that's coupled with the idea that we will develop those dashboards internally and then apply those locally at the school and classroom level, I, I think that's certainly something that we as an administrative team can work within. And Melissa, I thought, I'd just say, come on, if you'd like to add anything on the timeline for the appointment, just to help them as they think through this.
Thanks. Beth and I had an opportunity to meet last week and actually Sandy was working as well. So she was able to join us. We looked back at the last two timelines for the appointments and we will be bringing forward a proposed schedule for similar timeline for this appointment. If everything is approved as we have proposed, there would be an individual appointed to the seat prior to spring break. So that, we have to have it filled within 60 days of the vacancy and the vacancy started last Friday with Christina's resignation.
Okay. So I, um, thank you. I, emergence, yeah. Yeah, this, this puts me in a difficult spot because I have made a, well, I would like to, well, I don't think I've seen anything unreasonable here. I've made a, a strong and very public commitment that COVID levels would not, would not be completely removed from something that I would vote for. And I'll, I'll, I'll pass for now and I still have to think about it a little bit more. And I, I don't, I think if it's, if it's emergency board meeting and not a hard number, then I think the, the number might, might have to be different. But I'll, I'll pause for the moment, listen to others.
Go ahead, Laura.
So I agree with you, Andrew. I, I don't want to vote on this without some, some kind of number that our community can't go beyond as far as community spread. Cause I don't think you can just cordon off our, our students and staff and, and, you know, we don't function in a vacuum in our schools. So putting all these bodies and these humans back into these buildings, you know, we, we don't really know yet what that's going to cause as far as spread or how it will contribute. And also now with this new information about this uncertainty about when our teachers can start the vaccination process, um, I, I don't know if I can vote for this tonight.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Brenda, would, I mean, can we amend the motion to take into account four weeks after teachers get their first vaccine, their first vaccination? I, I'm not sure how we do this. I mean, I, I support this if it's based off of teachers getting their two doses of the vaccination.
So we can, we can amend it to say whatever, whatever we want. I mean, yeah, like I said, originally, it's kind of what I was thinking, but I put dates in to make it easier for people to follow.
Well, and I, and I like that too, because, you know, maybe that puts a little pressure down in Madison for them to prioritize our teachers and get them vaccinated. I know they're very interested in us opening our schools and it puts a little bit of the Otis on them. So that would be my recommendation. Regarding a ceiling, I, I just, I want somebody to give us a number. It sounds like, Andrew, you want, Andrew, Laura, you want to have a number to vote on this? And, and I'm fine. I, I mean, I guess I wonder what you want that number to be. And I like Brenda's idea, Steve. I mean, you know, you, you all go back and figure out. I like the idea of looking both at burden and looking at what our schools look like because, you know, everything, we get, we get data out and things are changing all the time, right? And we are, we're getting stuff in New York City, you know, they, last week I read an article that said they had to close 400 schools, but what they saw was that the spread was lower in the schools than it was in the community. So I do think looking at both what the climate is within our schools and what's going on long-term is the best thing. But if we need a number to pass this tonight, then somebody put a number out there that we can replace once the admin comes back with something for us to approve to replace it with.
Can we get the current motion?
Absolutely. I can share my screen. Are you able to see it?
Yes. Andrew, are you thinking on something?
I'm thi-, I'm thinking about it. Yep. If other people on it, it's going to take me a while to try to write something up here. If other people have other things to, to talk about.
I do, I do have a question. Steve, what does busing look like? I mean, has that changed at all? So let's say we, let's say it's two weeks from. It's two weeks from today and we are able to hit that March first date in order to bring everybody back. What does busing look like for our students? I mean, with the, with the co, with the cohorts for our secondary. We'll have fewer students on our buses, right?
Yeah, and I, I know Chad's on the call with us. I can't see him on the screen right now.
I, I can't see it on the screen either because the screen is being shared, so. So I just opened up my window, you know, just like any of the other operations team members, transportation would be ready to execute. You know, the, the requirements of the board. I think one, one thing that I'm very concerned about with respect to transportation though, is that. Parents have to have the understanding that it's, it's, you know, with kids getting on and off the bus, obviously we'll load the bus. As kids get on from the back going forward and as they go off from forward going back. But it, we're, it's going to be almost impossible to social distance, uh, and no school district in the area is social distancing effectively with the school buses. It's just not possible. Uh, there's not enough equipment and there's not enough drivers. Now, having said that, if we have thirty percent of our children. That are choosing to have virtual learning, that will really help. Um, but we'll put on as many routes as we possibly can and we'll do the best job that we can and that's all we can do.
Right. And, and just to add, um, also as Pete mentioned. Certainly some of the routes will be, uh, a, a few more students, some will be lighter. It'll just, uh, be dependent on each school. And, um, you know, what that might look like, so we'll do the best we can for sure.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, should I email my suggested language to Beth so you can copy paste it? Is that the easiest or what's easiest?
If you could email my way, that would be great.
Are there any, um, final questions? I mean, obviously Andrew's motion will get made here, but just. Wondering if we can get into a direction of, uh, being ready to vote on a motion.
I have one other thing. Well, that could be probably answered while I'm writing, because maybe it's, it's already been considered. Making the vaccine as easy as possible to get. Have we considered, uh, we're a big. We're a big place. Have we, are we going to be able to have maybe some district related sites for, for people to get the vaccine? First, for staff to get the vaccine. I've had some worry about, okay, am I going to have to worry about if I'm one of the first three hundred to call? For an, for an appointment or, um, you know, that kind of thing.
So we're doing a couple of things. So we're working with Pervia and Ballin, uh, through their mass vaccination sites. We're also looking through, uh, working through the vendor who does our flu vaccines and I see that Melissa and Kristen are both live on the screen here.
We've been working with VaxPro who did our flu vaccination clinic this year at West. That went very, very well. They have been approved as a vendor to administer the vaccine. However, just as Ballin and Pervia are bound by the classifications that. The state has put together, so would VaxPro. So they will not get that vaccine until we have gone through the groups as Steve noted tonight. And with the announcement of the age sixty-five and older getting it first. Um, I think that date's going to be pushed back even further. They did email us again today. And asked us, um, if we needed anyone in the one A group to get vaccinated, we've taken care of that with Pervia. So we're going to have to just wait, uh, to get to that one B group and where our teachers line up. And then that will be an additional source that we can do onsite for our staff.
Brenda, do you have one more?
I just, I was curious who, uh, you may have said this Steve when you first started talking about it, but, um, who, who's the final decision maker on? The priority in the one B group.
So we get that from the state, uh, and I know, uh, Kristen is on, I am actually able to confirm, uh. Uh, in the gap here that, uh, uh, the, uh, the senior one B group starts next Monday, the twenty-fifth. So as you start counting forward, Dawn, it's not today, it's next Monday, um, when you look at dates, but, uh. That information is determined at the state level. Uh, I did work with the other superintendents of the, the other four large districts in the state to send a. A letter, uh, to the governor imploring him to put educators first. Uh, and, and we just sent that letter out earlier this week, late last week, so I guess, uh, a little disappointed. Um, I'll be perfectly honest with you, I have an eighty-one-year-old mother who was on that list of those over sixty-five. Um, so obviously happy to hear that, uh, she's going to be in line to get that, but, um, frustrated that our, our teachers aren't first. Uh, and, uh, with the recognition how important the vaccine is to help get our staff back, uh, into school with our kids safely.
I have received Andrew's proposed amendment to the motion. Would you like to see it?
Sure. So then I'll, I'll make, I'll, I'll move the, the amendment, um.
Can we see it first?
Yeah, I'm going to, I, I moved to amend the current motion by adding the following. Should the Brown County case burden reach one thousand cases per one thousand population for fourteen days? An emergency board meeting shall be called regarding learning models.
And I would just offer, uh, in support to Andrew, uh, if he's talking about that, just from a data standpoint, that we do track this on a daily basis. And so it wouldn't necessarily be a waiting till Monday to find out type of thing. So just an FYI, I apologize. I think I stepped on somebody.
I think if, if we were, if it was going to be a hard number, it would have to be a check date. But I think if it's an emergency board meeting, it's just, it's just if we hit. I don't think we'll hit it. I, I, I think we probably won't hit it. And this might be replaced with something else in a relatively short period of time, but it's. And so it's allowing us to say that there is, um. There, there is something in there about COVID burdens.
So do we need to take a vote to add? Well, we don't have a second. Does anybody?
I would like to offer some feedback on this.
Don't, don't offer feedback until there's a second. Okay. Now you can make your comment, Laura.
Okay. So if we, oh. It went away. Look, um, if we have. A burden rate of. One thousand cases per one hundred thousand for fourteen days.
That's the same stat we've, I mean, I'm just use, I'm just continuing the same stat that we've been using all along.
Yes. We would be in emergency mode as a community, I think. And I think our schools should reflect that. So fourteen days seems, I would rather see that be, you know, maybe seven days. And, um, I'm not actually comfortable with one thousand cases. I think it should be less, so. I don't know if anyone else has, um, any. And also I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with knowing what we just learned about, um. The schedule for vaccines for our teachers with what is currently here. I'd like it to be pushed back. You know, part of me wonders if we could. Vote on this on Monday. We will know more about these vaccinations then. And, um, and maybe even get some feedback from people, but I, I know we, I know we've had a lot of feedback. Don't get me wrong. I know what I'm, I mean. I know what that means by saying that, but, um. I, I, I would have a very hard time, um, voting yes on this schedule. Cause the, you know, the vaccination schedule is pretty much, uh. I'm not, uh. I can't really get past that. I, um, that's a non-negotiable for me.
Yes. So frankly, Laura, I think we have to take a vote tonight. Um, after everything that we've gone through, calling a special meeting, moving it up, everything that's happened, um. And if it fails, it fails and then we have to go back to the drawing board, but I, I don't feel comfortable pushing this off.
I get it, but I feel like we're really, really close. You know what I mean? Like we're close. I'm just not. Um, this new information about vaccines has really put a, like, you know. I'm troubled by that. There's no guarantee when those vaccines are coming and I know we have a lot of people anxiously watching that.
I think we have a lot of people anxiously watching that, but we really don't have a definitive number about how many people are actually going to get the vaccine. In order to put everything that we're doing in a contingency mode on that one topic. We have to vote tonight. We cannot spin our wheels anymore. There are kids waiting. There are kids watching this. They need to know that they're a priority as well.
So do we need to take a vote to add Andrew's amendment?
Uh, we do, although, although there is a good. No, I'm going to leave it where the re, here's the, the reason why I, I was, I was thinking, do, do we? Switch it to a, a, a seven-day raid. I, again, I think if it's not, if it's not at a thousand, that automatically triggers the meeting. But we can see something very terrible has happened in the last week. Admin can call it, Eric can call it, two board members can call it. The idea of fourteen is it kind of gives you an idea of how, what percentage of the community has, has COVID. So if, if you're, if, when you're over a thousand, we're talking about a situation and, and that's. As it shakes out, just if you're thinking more in terms of what life was like at a particular time. We reached a thousand. We reached a thousand on basically, this is basically where we were October and November. And then right away in December, we started to improve. So we're talking about if we reach the, if we touch the October or November levels. And those are months when a lot of people were telling me I support opening, maybe not yet. That's where I started hearing some of that. At least, at least it's, um, it's something. So. That, I'm going to stick with that as my amendment. It's been seconded. It's. It's not perfect, but it also doesn't leave us in a situation where we have. Completely removed the COVID level in the community from the, from the discussion and that's important.
All right, um, Beth, do you have the ability to, or do you want us to do a voice vote on, just on Andrew's amendment?
We can take an online vote or a voice, voice vote.
Okay. If you're, if you can do online, then let's do that. So this is just on adding Andrew's amendment to the motion.
Exactly. An online voting has been opened.
Although the online vote states the whole motion, we're voting on the amendment.
Correct. Just that bottom line.
Beth, it's not coming up on my phone. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. Um, I'm going to be a yes.
Thank you.
Beth, I was on the public site, not authentic site, so, or the authentic site, so I'm a yes.
Thank you. And then Rhonda, I'm just waiting.
She said, she said, she, she said she's a yes, but Rhonda, you were muted, so we didn't hear it.
I said, if this gets us to pass something, I'm a yes. Thank you. A vote has been entered and the motion has carried with our board members voting in favor.
Okay, um. Andrew, you got something else?
Yeah, I have, I have one more thing and this, I'm just hearing, uh, I'm, I'm hearing a, a lot of it. Uh, I had a couple. People asked me about it just now, but it's not new tonight. It's, it's, it's been there for, for a while. The idea of, the idea of the new sixth graders and the new ninth graders co, uh, coming back a little bit earlier. I, I guess I'd like to have some, some discussion about that and, uh, and a possible, um. A possible amendment, um. That maybe. Now.
And maybe, Andrew, maybe before you proceed to that, sorry to interrupt, but I'll just, uh, offer that I know that that has been a hot topic conversation with the team. Uh, and I know that, uh, Vicki and Judy are both, uh, online with us and I know that, uh. They've had extensive conversation with, uh, the building administrators about, um, how to best meet, meet the needs of those kids. And so, uh, perhaps before you go any further, we could just invite them to, to share the thinking and, and some of the conversations that's taking place around. Uh, how to best meet the needs of our sixth and ninth graders.
That's correct, Steve. That would be our desire and our plan. Uh, we would move forward with more concrete idea of what that could look like. Once the board votes on a, a plan for us to work with.
Which right now doesn't include any of them going back before March first, so. That would be off the table if, if we don't add something here. Um, yeah, I think I want to see where the board is at on it, so I'm, um. Can we see the motion again? Can we please see the motion again? I should, so that like that. Thank you.
I do have a question about the motion. Since we passed Andrew's amendment. Do we still need the, and the administration shall develop criteria for transition to virtual learning due to the transmission of COVID within the district schools? Or is that there because this is going back with, um, to the administration to bring something forward to the board?
Yeah, I think I, that would be my take as we leave that in there because it signifies that, that the team will come back and at the, you know. We may remove that, that last sentence depending, but Andrew wanted that there in the meantime, so.
Okay. It seems, it seems a little bit redundant, so I just wanted to make sure that we, we needed both at this point.
Yeah, the, the administration is going to have something more refined pro, probably. I, I'm certain, well, they already said they're going to have something with multiple steps in it. It also might not be a bad idea just to have in, you know, it might be a good thing to have it stay in the, even when we have. You know, looking at the bigger picture, a thousand would be the sign of. Emergency spread in the community that even if there was something, you know, may, sometimes there might be a point. Where even if things are going well in our schools. It's just so bad that it, we know it's unsustainable and the safer thing to do. And, you know, I, and I realize there's people who, you know, wanted something to be passed, and it had no COVID numbers in it. But I, I don't think, um, we can ignore them right now. Um. I'm going to put in another amendment about grade six to nine and you can vote it up or down and then I have. Probably two questions and then I'm, I'm done, but I'll, I'll write that up.
And if I could just offer, I think that, uh, that was one of the questions I asked Andrew earlier, which he affirmed, which is. Um, I think there's still an expectation for the, the, uh, admin team to come back and look at. Um, what are triggers for classrooms and schools? Uh, and, and what will those data points look like and how will we re, represent that to the community so that they can see it too? Um, so I, I would agree with Andrew that there might be a need for both of their, uh, when you go through that final process. Just so that we have both a macro level view of what to do at the district level, but then also a micro level view of what happens in classrooms and schools.
Go ahead, Brenda.
I'm also wondering if, uh, Dawn, you had mentioned an amendment related to timing of the vaccination. Cause right now the, uh, the, the motion sets a specific date. Cause right now the, uh, the, the motion sets a specific date. I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to, uh, make that amendment too.
It doesn't, I, I, I need the amendment. Whether I make it, Brenda, or you make it, you probably, you would probably write it more eloquently than.
No, no. That would not be me. Um, you know, I guess I'm, I'm wondering what, what, uh, before I write the amendment, I'm wondering what people are thinking in terms of timing. And I'll, first I'll ask Steve, I guess, um, as I said before, I think the, the first vaccine gives a pretty high level of protection, starting two weeks after the vaccine has been given. And, and now, I mean, obviously, we thought we knew what was gonna go on next week and now we don't. Um, but if whatever date our teachers get the first vaccine in, is that the, the second vaccine? Is that more time certain? Or, and if not, are board members, um, willing to, to vote something that's, you know, knowing that the first vaccine will give, uh, pretty decent protection? Um, and vote something that's three weeks out, uh, or four weeks out? Um, or do we have, or do board members need to have that second vaccine date in the motion also?
I just offer real quick that, uh, I don't see, uh, I can't see Kristen's face on here, but, uh, just a reminder that, uh, both the, uh, medical professionals at, at, uh, Pervaya and Bellon have, have both, uh, given us some level of assurance that if you get the first vaccine, um, they have the doses allocated for the second vaccine. So, um, they did share with us that they have a high level of confidence that those who get the first will get the second.
And do you think they'll get it? I mean, I know the standard time is twenty-one days. Will they get it in twenty-one days?
That's what they've indicated. And I know that, uh, Kristen shared that, that those of our employees who have already gone in, they're scheduling their follow-up when they're getting the first vaccine. So, uh, they appear to be adhering to that timeline.
All right. And then, will all our teachers be able to get that second? I mean, will all our teachers get their first vaccine on the same day? Will that be a district?
Sorry, I muted.
A district day?
It's a, it's a, unfortunately, it's a first come, first served basis. And that's why we made the plea with the governor to, to tier the one Bs. Uh, and, and make sure that we weren't fighting with others, whether it was grocery store employees or, or those over sixty-five, uh, at least for now, they, they've opened up the over sixty-five. Uh, and, and so on a first come, first served basis, um, um, we're gonna be stuck looking for spots in the queue with many, many, many other people in the community. Um, so they won't get it all on whatever the first date is that it's available for educators. And it's likely to be spread out for some period of time after that. For what period of time? That I don't know.
Steve, the other thing that I would like to add to that is we probably don't want them all getting it on the same day, just due to side effects. The first vaccine is not bad. Um, some arm tenderness has really been the major thing. A few people with some headaches. But the second one, it could take people out for a day. Um, it seems like symptoms are starting about six to twelve hours after they're getting the vaccine and lasts for twenty-four to thirty-six hours. So it'll actually be better to have them spread out a little bit.
How, how many people are getting symptoms that they might be expected to be off work? Who want one percent, five percent? Half of them?
This is Kristen. It's, you know, really hard to say, cause everyone's, um, reaction is different and everyone's tolerance is much different also.
But I'm talking about medical numbers. What percent have reports cited? I mean.
I would have to look it up.
Okay. In, in the meantime, I did send in the, uh, I did, I did send in, I, I think it's a, I think it's a valid enough topic to, um, I think we need to make a decision on. I think it, I think it has merits and I think, I think the motion has written, they could not start six and nine early with what we've written. Unless we do this amendment. So I, did I send it, Beth?
Thanks, Andrew. Yep, and I'm just skipping it, paste it right now. Okay, it should be.
Okay, Andrew. So my question is, if Brenda amends this motion to be based off of vaccines, are you talking about bringing six through nine in before the teachers are vaccinated? Because you have specific dates in here. Or are you talking about pushing out seventh, eighth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth a week later? So sixth and ninth can come in early.
No, I think I'm, in the original model, which we're not, is not the motion right now. I was gonna propose six and nine coming in a, a week early. I guess if this is modif- if this is modified and I, I have, I have some real concerns. I, I think we need to, if there's an, if we need to come back for emergency reasons, we can do that emergency board meeting. But I think people are looking for an answer tonight and to, um, I guess what I would prefer to do with these dates is if, if there's a significant delay in the vaccine or school and I, school staff get, um, get the short end of the straw and the, you know, second time in the vaccines, maybe the emergency board meeting is the place to do that because, hey, look, the vaccines aren't gonna be there. I, I would rather have that than, you know, trying to say that three K through one comes back, you know, two weeks after the first vaccine is available to teachers. That's just, um, Yeah, so I, I don't know. I, I think, I think if my amendment passes or fails, we will have a date specific motion. And then if someone wants to amend that to be a vaccine specific motion, then, um, I guess we have a different thing there. And remember, our highest risk staff are, are in the group that's getting vaccines starting next week too.
You mean, our highest risk staff are in the one A group, right? They've been getting vaccines already.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wanna make, clarify that we don't have another group that's up next week.
All right. So Andrew, have you officially made a motion to add this language?
Um, yeah, so it would replace it. It would say abundant instructional model. The line, the third line would be with AB cohorts in grade six and nine on February twenty-second and grade seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve on March first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, if there's no other discussion, we can vote on adding Andrew's amendments to the original motion. Go ahead, Beth.
Thank you. Are you comfortable if I just do a verbal vote?
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you, Eric. Smith?
No.
Warren? I'm so sorry, Brenda.
Hi.
Thank you. Brandon Hovell?
Hi.
Sit Nakow?
Yes.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
All right, pals. Five to one. Go ahead, Brenda.
Well, I'm, um, I'm, if we think we would have to come back, Andrew, for another meeting to determine some dates because the vaccine is or is not becoming available. Um, I am uncomfortable having specific dates out there. Without, I mean, it seems like we should have an indication of the number of weeks after the vaccine becomes available to our staff. Because otherwise, somebody sees this motion in next week and doesn't know all of the back conversation that we've had tonight about the vaccine schedule. It'll just be confusing.
Go ahead, Laura.
Yes, um, I, I need these days to align with, uh, um, what our, our vaccine schedule is more likely to be before I can vote yes on it.
Does anyone have to, if, if that's what someone wants to do, they'd want to, I guess they would need to move an amendment. They would probably amend all the dates back. So the, the motion now has a February fifteenth, a February twenty-second for just six and nine, and a March first for everyone else. So probably the easiest way to do an amendment would be to advance them all by a week, advance them all by two weeks, I, I suppose. I'm, I think I'm okay with, it, see, the, the emergency triggered board meeting is the thing that allows me to vote yes on, on dates. I'm not thrilled about voting yes on dates, but I can because there's a, at least there's an emergency trigger. Uh, no, no, no vote here feels, feels great, but I think we're, you know, I don't think we'll ever hit the thousand either, so.
So here, here's one of the things that I wanted at least point out, uh, when it comes to our high schools, high schools and middle schools, is that, um, in, in this proposal right now, we strongly believe that every staff will have at least one vaccine. Maybe they don't have their second dose by the time we hit some of those dates. But what we do know is that we can follow every single mitigation strategy. We can socially distance, we can require masks, we can wash hands, we have PPE. All of those other things are in place, which, um, the science says is a, you know, significantly prevents the spread of the virus. So one shot, one, one dose of, of vaccine, not two, but one, and every single mitigation strategy feels to me like a compromise um, that I would be willing to accept, uh, you know, in, in our upper grades. Now, what we would have to decide is, you know, how do people feel about those younger grades? Again, may not be able to social distance as well, um, being that kids are in a different model. So that, that's one of the things that I would consider to accept this motion, knowing that we feel good at least one round, if not, you know, and the second one is coming. Um, and then we can follow every single, uh, mitigation strategy, which is why I would, um, support the motion as it's written. Go ahead, Rhonda.
I will only support the motion as it's written because I'm not willing to add more weeks on to these kids already. You know, they're experiencing this for almost a year. So I'm not willing to continue and add to that one more minute that I have to.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Uh, just to bring a little, little levity to the meeting, I wa- I was happy to find out, um, like a minute ago that my, uh, parents are scheduled for the vaccine. And I responded with great news and asked my mom about substitute teaching. So, uh, it's probably gonna be a no, but Steve, if you was to apply, I'll sort your way. So, yeah, maybe it's, um, yeah, I, oh, and I, this does bring up, okay, so if someone is, let's say we, there are some, I don't know how many, but probably some staff have medical situations where the doctors say you can come back when you're officially deemed vaccinated. Um, I would assume for those people, if, if it's then, since they would be able to probably return, um, they might have a sub or one of those creative arrangements for a while. I mean, there's, we wouldn't mess with their position over them being two weeks, delayed two weeks because their, um, ADA or doctor certification says you can come back when you're vaccinated, right?
So that'll be, uh, they'll, they'll be working through HR on that. So as they get, uh, approval to come back, if, if they've got a, a medical exception on file, then, uh, we wind up filing, following that. Uh, and they work directly with, uh, with HR to determine their return date.
They shouldn't lose their class. I mean, right? That would be silly. Over two weeks, we wouldn't have them just flipped to a whole different classes. We would do a long-term sub, knowing that they're cleared, but they have to wait till they're officially vaccinated, right?
And they may be able to teach offsite too, Andrew, with their students onsite, depending on the grade level and the course.
If we, if we, um, approve to go back before the second vaccine, like Kristen said, and there's side effects on the second vaccine, are we going to have a bunch of staff out the first week we're back because people are getting vaccinated and having side effects?
I think it's so hard to say that. I was trying to look up very quickly what percentage of staff or people might have significant side effects and, and just very rapidly, I couldn't find anything. You know, it shows like fifty percent might have something, but like I said, everybody's version of what's debilitating to them is very different. Um, and I know that is one of the reasons why the hospitals tried to pace out areas when they were vaccinating, like all the labor nurses didn't get it on Friday. They kind of spaced out over a few days. So.
If I could just jump in for a second, Eric, I, I think you might have mentioned about social distancing. I just wanna make sure everybody understands, especially the parents that are watching, that, uh, we can't guarantee social distancing at any level. Uh, pre-K through twelve, we will certainly do our best. Um, but I don't wanna make any impression out there that we're able to keep all of our students at six foot distance at all time.
The elementary, it won't be that. And high school, it will certainly sometimes not be that. Um, although it's where I, I was on the fence about four day versus AB for middle school, but middle school and high school will share the feature of passing, passing time and reduce, and at least trying to reduce being packed in the halls is, I think, important.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Go ahead, Laura.
I'm gonna try this one more time. So Wisconsin recorded today forty-two more dead people from COVID and fifteen hundred more cases. And from all accounts, we're gonna be dealing with the variant in a very short period of time. And no one really knows how that's gonna impact the numbers in our state, let alone in our, you know, in our community. So I feel like we need to pay attention to this. And that's why I feel so strongly about vaccinations, uh, for the people that are closest to the children that we serve. So, um, and you know, the, the people that have been sending me basically non-stop hate mail throughout this whole meeting and called my house and posted my number on Facebook and shouted into my phone. I can hear it downstairs. Um, I'm one floor up and I can hear them. You know what? I would, I would like to just say something to people. Um, You know what? I would, I would like to just say something to people, um, who have targeted our board over the last few weeks. When did it become shameful to put the health and safety of our students and staff first? This, this is what we have been arguing about and dealing with for months on end. And I know that everyone on our board is gonna vote their conscience tonight, and I respect that. And I hope you will for me as well. But, um, you know, it's been just a non-stop, um, throughout this entire meeting, before we even are gonna take a vote. So I feel strongly about these vaccinations, and for good reason. It's not just something that, um, you know, that is just, it's a tangible, real thing, and it affects real people, and these people teach our students and are close to our students. And we always, you know, we always claim to care about that. Why don't we care about that now? You know? So yes, I would like those dates to line up. It doesn't look like we have the votes for that. So that's my last stab at it.
Well, there's only one way to find out, and that's to, to take a vote. So, um, money, unless anyone else has any last-minute things, um.
Yeah, sorry, do, do, are we guaranteeing that if you're bilingual, like, you're not gonna be moved, your program isn't gonna, your teacher might change, but you're not gonna suddenly get from a bilingual into a, like, not bilingual, right? We would, like, elementary? You, you would stay with. Like, there's no intent, but I need to know it's, like, not gonna happen.
I, well, I don't, uh, I'll ask, uh, Vicky or, uh, Anne or Andrea or others can, uh, chime in and tell me whether we can give Andrew an ironclad guarantee on that.
Nancy, you can hop on if you want. I, I just would respond, maybe you can correct me, Nancy. I don't know that we can make any guarantee because we don't know which teachers are gonna be on campus and which aren't at this point. Nancy?
Uh, I would dittle that. I'd feel very uncomfortable confirming uh, anything locked in, locked in solid, knowing that we have limited bilingual teachers. And I personally don't know the status of, um, whether or not they're been approved for leave or if, uh, they're going to be returning. We will do our absolute best to keep our system intact. That's.
And there's a spot where I think possibly some of your buddy system creative solutions maybe could come into play because I've heard from, um, I've, I, I have several bilingual teachers that I, I talk to kind of regularly, and it seems like a lot of them are perhaps around the fifty percent mark of, of their classes. So that might roll out the red carpet to some kind of a buddy, a buddy system, ju, you know, two teachers sharing two groups kind of thing with one virtual and one not. So I hope that's, I hope that's given a solid look as one of the potential options because I think we need to keep, you know, kids in their, in their programs the, the best we possibly can, so.
I totally agree with you, Mr. Becker.
We agree, we agree.
And then, um, in case there are teacher, are, are we um, as far as like other, we talked about PPE, but also like if there's some other technology needs, if there's, um, I heard about like microphones because if it's hard, if, if someone is gonna be moving around and being in an AB cohort, that maybe the, if they wanna be able to walk around, um, can we, I mean, can we get them a, can we get them a microphone? Can we get them one of these if that lets them maybe move around and, you know, wide angle, the wide angle, the camera, if, if they're in a situation where they have some kids at home and some kids not, I'm not saying that's the main model, but it could happen from time to time.
I'd offer that Josh and his team have been really creative about trying to help people meet their needs. So I'm sure they'd be open to working with staff based on, on their tech needs through their building administrators.
Yeah, uh, the availability of, of microphones and webcams, it's pretty robust right now, um, from what I've heard of the.
Well, it's good again, or it's not good?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty good.
It's good again, okay, good.
Um, from what I've heard, uh, the dis, the instructional model that's been described, it didn't seem like there would be a high need for that sort of equipment within our classrooms, but that's something we can certainly work out, um, with, uh, in concert with teaching and learning. Um, I did work with um, DaVinci, who is in a unique situation where if we were going to do any kind of, if we're gonna allow any kind of virtual instruction, um, they would have to do max flex because they're, or their high flex because their curriculum is different, right? Um, so we did work to get, uh, webcams and in their classrooms over there. It's something I'm, I'm certain that we can handle.
Okay, I would just hope that the, the, the response would almost all the time be yes, if someone's looking for a piece of equipment that's a two-digit number for a cost, you know, mid, you, you know, with COVID funds that can be applied for and, and so forth. Um, okay, and I think that was, um, yep, that was, I think that was everything I had promised I would, um, I would ask. It's, it's really important to me and, and the, I, I'm uncomfortable not putting this in the motion, but I just could not come up with a way to do it. It's very important to me that those people who have a legitimate family reason to um, stay virtual, that we are looking to creative ways to find a way that they can teach virtual, and it's not just, people are gonna say, Andrew, you're just doing that because you wanna cater to people who wanna work in. No, okay. I like working at home, okay, but I do IT, it's a different, it's a different world, and that said, I only like it, okay. I mean, it gets, right? So teachers aren't wanting to teach their classes remotely, but some have to. And the kids like having their teachers, it's good for kids to have their teachers. So I really, though there's no way to write this in a motion, it's really important to me. I, I want to know that in a couple months that, hey, yep, we covered more people than the bare minimum who had family situations that didn't qualify for medical. And here's, here's some of the creative ways we did pairings or alternative arrangements or beam the teacher into the room. I really hope we hear some of those stories and then ideally file them away for never having to use them again, at least not for, not for this reason, but maybe there's a good, some good things to be learned and some positives for, for non-pandemic times. So I'm, I'm done. So.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So I'm somewhat uncomfortable with these dates, um, because I think, I mean, I know people feel like we should be serving students and not our staff, but I, we have to have staff in our buildings to be able to run our schools. And I think we saw with our neighboring districts that once we got up above a thousand, you know, they, most of them closed. They were having trouble keeping their staff. And so, um, and so I, I feel like the, the immunization is, is, uh, is an important part of this. Um, again, I, I don't wanna open schools and then we get to nine hundred and a week later we're closed again. Um, I think consistency, uh, uh, of instruction has to be part of this equation. Um, the, my original motion, um, was based upon possibly getting vaccinated the week of the twenty-fifth. And so I put that three weeks later for the younger kids. Um, but if, I, I, I mean, I don't know, if we, are people comfortable with setting these dates and then we find out nobody can get immunized until the fifteenth? Um, that, I guess that's what I'm, I'm, um, I'm concerned about, again, locking into those dates. Um, I would hope that, um, we could get some priority for, for our teachers, um, you know, because they're, anyway, but I, so I'm, um, I'm wondering if, I, I don't know, I guess I'm interested in what people think. Um, you know, the, if they got vaccinated the week of, of, uh, uh, sorry, the week of February first, um, three weeks later would be the twenty-second. Um, you know, I guess I'd be willing to compromise a little bit from the, um, and bring, bring, uh, uh, maybe all of elementary, but, and again, if they, if it doesn't happen, I guess I'd rather, I'd, personally, I'd rather set a week, like, three weeks after the first, um, immunization is offered to teachers. Um, for the, for the elementary, and then maybe a week later for a secondary.
Rhonda, can you actually name a date when you speak like that? I mean, or you speak to that? What date are you thinking?
Well, I just, it's, I mean, it depends on the, when the vaccines are available.
How, how has healthcare been able to be running for ten months with no vaccines? And we can't get this done for kids? And just work through it. I don't understand that.
I mean, healthcare has been built and has functioned as an infection control center for fifty years. I mean, that's what they do.
What I'm saying is I have clients who are ICU nurses who are begging for us to get their kids back in school. I, I just, my head is, I, I can't, I can't look at the screen anymore. We need to vote on something.
No, Rhonda, that's really disingenuous because most head, um, healthcare workers are, are believe in the science and want us to follow the science. It's.
Nobody said they didn't believe in the science. I'm just saying, it is a fact that there are people who have been working out there in much riskier environments who don't get to wait for vaccination to get back to work. Why can't we just get our kids back to school and trust that we're going to work through this?
So, so here's what I would add, I think, Brenda, to your original question, is that, um, in this plan, again, feel very optimistic that, uh, staff would have access to at least one dose of the vaccine before some of these dates kick in. Um, it's also important to point out that the vaccine isn't a, a magic wand, right? So that from the CDC, it's one of the mitigation strategies along with masking and washing and, and all of those other things. Makes people, uh, feel a little bit better and I think optimistic because it's, it's new. Um, what I would, um, recommend respectfully is that we take a vote on this motion. Um, if it passes, uh, we, our meeting is over. If, uh, it doesn't pass, then we can, we don't have to throw the whole thing out. Somebody can then remake a motion with different dates and we can, um, can go from there. So that would be my suggestion. Um, bless you. So just, uh, just a thought, and again, if, if it doesn't have four votes in the way that it's currently written, then we, you know, we'll, we'll modify it until we can get four votes.
Why can't we just ask everybody if they would be open to changing those dates?
There's a motion on the table. It's been seconded. We've, we've worked this amendment now for, uh, over three hours. Uh, I, I would suggest voting on it and then we'll, we'll see where we fall. So with that said, Beth, um, please open up voting on the, the amendment, or on the entire motion.
Online voting has been opened.
Can you read that motion out loud, please?
Absolutely. And the original motion, you will not see the amendments in there, but they have been passed.
So just to be clear, we're, we're, we're boning on the whole thing now.
Correct.
Would you like me to read it with amendments?
Yes, please.
My screen? The Green Bay area public school district shall commence in-person instruction Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday for 3K through first grade on February fifteenth, second through fifth grades, excuse me, second through fifth grades on March first, and a blended instructional model with with AB cohorts in grades six and nine on February twenty-second and grades seven, eight, ten, eleven, and twelve on March first, twenty-twenty-one, with the week of March twenty-second, all students attending virtual, and the same models of instruction resuming March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and that the administration shall develop criteria for transition to virtual learning due to transmission of COVID within the district schools. Should the Brown County case burden reach a thousand cases per one hundred thousand population for fourteen days, an emergency board meeting shall be called regarding learning.
All right. Are we ready to vote? Did you open online or are you gonna do?
I'll do, um, I'll just call everybody.
Okay.
Warren?
No. Oops, yeah.
I'm sorry, Brenda, you're no?
No, yeah.
Becker? I'm sorry, Andrew, unmuted.
Aye.
McCoy?
No.
Sit Nakow?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
And then who's on?
Aye. All right, motion, um, is tied three to three, which means that it does not pass. Um, I guess I would ask anyone who voted no if they would be comfortable making a similar motion and if you need us to pull that back up um, with any modifications that you might suggest. Go ahead, Brenda.
Um, I will change, shall commence in-person instruction, instruction for 3K through first grade. Um, three weeks after immunizations are available to teachers and second through fifth grades, uh, uh, one week later.
Brenda, could we, could we bring all of our?
Yeah, I think, I, I was going to, uh.
Take the K three to first out and just bring all of our elementary back at the same time.
Okay. So 3K through fifth grade.
The blended, the, the, the secondary kids would be.
Oh, and then, oh, sorry, I forgot about the amendment. Um, uh, um, I guess the AB cohorts, um, the same week as the 3K through fifth, I mean, they'll be able to social distance decently. Um, because there'll only be two grades in the school, so passing time and lunch and all those things should be pretty well distanced. So I'm comfortable with that as three weeks. Um, and then the, uh, AB cohorts on, or, and then with AB cohorts, grade seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve on March, or on, uh, one week later.
So what's the definition of, oh, I, I'll wait for a sec, for there to be a second.
Oh, sorry, I just went before Laura, before you second. This is the way you wanted to read, Brenda? I just wanna do a last words. I just want to do a last words.
Yeah, that sounds fine. Um, and I guess what I mean by a vaccine, and I don't know if I have to define this more, but what I mean by vaccinations are available to teachers, it's the the three weeks from the first day that those are available. Because that would assure that all teachers would be in that, you know, po- two-week post-vaccination window. Uh, when they come back, I'm assuming our teachers can get vaccinated in a week, that's the assumption I'm making.
And school staff, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All staff.
Yeah, all staff, sorry.
To school, well, to school, I think to, at least, at least school staff, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
Steve? Can I, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Um, did this get seconded? Sorry. Did you second Laura?
Yes, she did.
Okay, sorry, I missed that, I was concentrating on my amendment.
Steve, I just want to ask you a question, so this is a, you know, this is a very important trigger. You know, that date that it becomes available. So, are, when that happens, will you be able to, um, at least let the board and then anybody who has a a stake in that, right, who needs to to, to, um, or if, even if you have lead time where you can say, look, we know now that it's gonna be this date. Um, and prepare yourself and sign up and get everything so that, so that there's no kind of last, uh, last minute, you know, jockeying for slots and things like that, that people are are ready and and ready to, you know, ready to go.
So I offer that, uh, Bellin and Purvey have both been very forthcoming with us about this process, uh, as was evidence from the fact that they're they're contacting me literally during the meeting to give me updates. Um, so I have a high level of confidence that, um, when they know first date available, that they will let us know. And then I'd offer that, uh, Kristen has been working with our team, uh, Terry, Melissa, uh, and others. Um, and we've got a really robust notification process, they did a great job with the one A's, um, figuring out who's on that list and how to get the notice out to them. Um, they've already got those draft notices ready to go, so, uh, we can be immediately responsive, uh, when we're told, uh, what the date is. And we will keep you as a board up to speed on that.
Thanks, Steve.
I just ask a question, I I just want to make sure that if the dates for the vaccine becoming available, then three weeks later is after March twenty-second. Do you want any changes with how this motion is written? I I just want to make sure that this is taking into account that if it's pushed back and staff aren't able to be eligible for that vaccine, which would then not align with the March twenty-second or March twenty-ninth dates?
Well, it wouldn't align with March twenty-second, because everybody would be virtual, so maybe it's, um, so I think that's okay, right? Melissa, um.
I think we're gonna have to meet, if if we're talking about all the, if if this gets delayed that long, I'm certainly, I, I, it wouldn't. If we don't have a, i- if this is the motion that passes, and we don't have a definitive vaccine date for teachers within two weeks, I'm gonna I'm gonna request an emergency board meeting, much less seven weeks, though I, I appreciate wanting to have it covered, but this will certainly have to be revoked if we're, um, stuck like that. I, I'm going to have to vote no on this, though, because I can't, I can't vote. I I would rather, although I I know it's a valid point that some people would like what I'm about to say less than what we're doing here. I would rather put dates out there and and consider having to change if there's a problem with the vaccine than to have, uh, our final motion for tonight left in the hands of a, of a third party. If this, if this fails in the interest of getting something to pass, I would consider Brenda, the motion, the way Brenda made it with everything bumped back one additional week. I might be able to vote for that, but I have to vote no on this on the grounds that there's, it's, it's too it's too third-party dependent, I would rather set something and have to change it than set something nebulous like this, so that's where I'm at.
So, just to clarify, Andrew, you're saying you can't vote for this as written at this time?
Right. I could, I could live with it going back another week from what Brenda originally said, if that would make it pass. But I can't I can't tell the public that we, we spent four hours and what we, what we came up with is tying the, tying this to a tying this to another tying this to a, to a separate event that I could, I could see a lot, I could see there being problems with arguments about interpretation, um. Well, what if, you know, maybe some, yeah, I just. That's where I'm, that's where I'm at. I think we need to vote on it this way and see what happens.
So Andrew, just to clarify, so you're comfortable setting dates a week later, and if the vaccine is not a com- uh, not available at all, you're comfortable sending our teachers back to school without any vaccines at all?
So we have, we have procedures in place for that, we have ability to have, we have the ability to have, um, remote work, um. I, it really, it depends a lot on what's it depends a lot on what the actual situation is, I'm, it's more about tying it to uh, tying it to a third party like this, it seems, it seems like we're I would ha- I would have to think about it seriously, if if we found out something went very wrong with vaccine distribution. I'd have to really think about it, I think there are some teachers who are ready to go back pre-vaccine, if the, the right, if they're assured the right PPE is there, as we've been talking about all along. I think, I I, I don't think, I know there are many teachers ready to go back, if we're looking at creative solutions, um. But, you know, I've, I've talked enough, I'm, I'm gonna be a no on this, and then if it's, if it passes, if it passes anyways, it probably won't be that far off, because the vaccine will probably come. And it's more of a technical reason, if it, if it deadlocks again, I'll try something that I think might have a chance to get us to four or five, so. Let's see what happens.
Why are you a no on this?
Because it is, because I'm voting on something that I have no control over the, like, the it's completely tied to a outside decision where I think there could be room for confusing interpretation over it.
The whole thing is.
What if a teacher, what, what if? Like, like, what if? Who, who knows, what if DHS comes out and says, well, since I don't think this will happen, I almost hate to throw this hypothetical out there, but what if they say? Uh, high school, you know, older kids are more risk, so we're gonna let certain teachers of older kids get it, I don't think that would happen, but then is it triggered, or is it not triggered if they don't?
You know what, Andrew, you and I are gonna call a special board meeting, um, ourselves, per the policy that you actually talked about, and we're gonna get kids in school if that happens.
Um, me, I mean.
That's what we'll do.
Uh, well, I mean, maybe we'll, I mean, I'm, I I don't know what, I'd have to know what the situation is on the ground before I would I would vote, um, I, I can't, you know, I could vote for something with dates if there was a caveat about COVID numbers. I could have voted for something probably with, driven by higher COVID numbers. Um, I made it clear, you know, with with my vote on the previous motion, that I thought we were good to go with a reasonable compromise, it failed three to three. But I clearly showed where I stood on it, and if it, if this come, if this fails, and it comes back with a week later, um, or something, I'll, I could probably vote for it, but I think, I think the first try was about right.
I think we get something on the books and we keep fighting, let's just do that.
All right, so there's a motion on the table, uh, Beth, I think we're ready to vote.
Thank you, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, Eric, okay?
Yep, that's fine.
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Hubo?
Aye.
Sit Nakow?
I'm gonna vote aye on this, but I, uh, I'm hoping that we can expedite the process.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
No, I voted yes on a stronger proposal a few minutes ago.
All right, the motion passed, five to one. All right, that said, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
Eric?
Yep.
Mind, I'd just like to say something, um, so I just want to I I think we'd, actually, it was hard, and it was excruciating at times, but I think we did some good work here tonight, believe it or not, a lot of people, our staff, we're all prepared, we covered an enormous amount of of territory. And I sh- I'm sure there's more that's gonna have to be covered as well as the days unfold, but, um, as hard as it was and as long as it was, I just want to thank you all.
All right, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Tom Moore?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, pass six zero. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five, or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.